Look at all the haters, smiling alligators. They say that your life is a sin. They don't have no say, oh, they don't have no stake. But you let them get under your skin. If you break a little finger, let the pain linger. Then you press upon the skin, you will bleed. Haters on your bread, haters on your butter. You find them, then you know you succeed. You succeed. Then you know you succeed.
Now go home and get your fucking shine box.
Then you know you succeed.
What a rush!
0.07, 0.01, 0. Paragraph one and subsection 4.07, 0.01, 0. Paragraph two. Persons addressing counsel shall not engage in any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise unreasonably impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Those that engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise unreasonably impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or majority of the council, be barred from further participating during that meeting. In short, we do not allow personal attacks. Therefore, please be respectful of these chambers and all who sit here and of the viewing audience. The rules of decorum are set forth for the public and council, and they shall be enforced in the following manner. Warning: The presiding officer shall request that a person be silent and orderly. If after receiving that warning from the presiding officer, a person persists, the presiding officer shall order him or her to leave the council meeting. If such person chooses not to remove him or herself, the presiding officer may order any law enforcement officer to remove that person from council chambers. So, city clerk, do we have any comments from members of the public this evening?
We do, mayor. May I have Donald Tafoya to the podium, please?
First and foremost, like everyone else, my heart goes out to the four victims of last, or the birthday party for the children. Last general meeting, I was, it was gonna be my last time I was gonna speak here, and primarily because I do not like wasting my efforts or my time in seeing the same results. And we still have the same results. We can pray all we want, but there's still division. I'm not here to bash, this may be my last time too, because I really don't like wasting my time. I'm not here to bash Councilman Lee. I don't care about him one way or the other. I care what he has done to the council and to the city. He may pat himself on the back a lot, but he always paints himself as a victim, and he has caused division. The reason I'm here today is because when I first got here, at the last meeting, two women came up to me and asked me if I'd run in their district, District Six. They were not black. They're elderly women. I still had my mind made up that was my last talk. As I exited the building, another woman walked up to me and said, "Great job, keep it up." I said, "Oh, okay, so that's why I'm here today." Make a victim, he's made a victim on this last event where he made reference to his, and I lost a brother too. That doesn't make me a victim. But he made a victim of himself in this event that happened just recently. He goes, "Oh, my brother got killed." Well, my heart goes to him, so did my brother. But that's here nor there, but he always paints himself as a victim. Bless his little heart. We, uh... You know, he's been crying for an audit, and it made me think, "Why don't we audit him?" And I've looked at his interviews, his podcast shows, and some other videos of him. Very disgusting, to say the least. And unless his podcast audience is 100% illegal aliens, I call them invading aliens.
Point of order, is the conversation...
Yeah, point of order, point of order.
Excuse me?
Point of order.
Public gets to...
I understand, but my understanding...
Of my time?
We're not engaging in...
I'm at a minute and 15 seconds.
Excuse me, I said point of order, so you have to acknowledge that.
Yeah, well, do it. Last time I spoke, you walked out, so what do you care?
Mr. Tafoya, so what is your point?
Here's the point of order. You just read decorum rules that you're enforcing. It's my hope that we're enforcing them consistently. Personal attacks, my dead brother, my podcast, all that has nothing to do with the matters of the business we're here to talk, so let's stay focused on what we're here to talk about.
So, city attorney, what are the parameters that I have regarding speakers at the podium?
So, public commenters are allowed to, you know, use their time as they see fit. If they're, if they're in violation of the decorum rules, then you follow the process that you read out in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so, in terms of their right to speak, because I know that's been brought up before, we can censor that, then?
No, I think that, again, look at your rules, and if there are, if there's a violation of any of the rules that you wrote out, offensive, personal attacks, things like that, you make a judgment call to the presiding officer, and then you follow your rule accordingly.
So am I out of line?
Mr. Tafoya, if you could please refrain from...
Okay, I will, I apologize.
Thank you.
Can I have my minute and 15 seconds back?
Time will stop at the minute, is interrupted.
Okay.
That's your time there, 49 seconds.
So anyhow, as I listened to one of his several podcasts, he's, and I don't care if he likes Trump or hates him, it doesn't matter to me, but he says, "Trump's taking away your health insurance." He's not taking away anybody's health insurance. He's taking health insurance away from illegal aliens that came in the country illegally. But when you make statements, either you're misrepresenting or you're telling a falsehood, which could be called a lie, but I'm not calling them that. Anyhow... You can paint yourself any way you want, but if you're not spewing the truth, then, I don't know what other word I can use without being in violation again. So all I would ask the people here today is seek the truth. You know, the truth will set you free. I'm not here to preach or teach. I'm asking you to reach out and verify whatever any of these people up here tell you.
Thank you, thank you. Next.
Nikki Smith?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the city council, members of our community. My name is Nikki Smith. I'm the president of Cleveland School Remembers, a local branch of Rady United Against Gun Violence. I am here regarding the recent tragedy that occurred on Lucille Avenue that took the lives of four young children and injured many. I have attended a vigil and community convenings where emotions have ranged from numbness to heavy sadness to anger. I have been part of the gun violence prevention movement for many years, and I'm sorry to report that this incident is not unique to Stockton or our country. Death by gun violence is the number-one killer of children in our country. Eight children die every day by a firearm. There are more guns in our country than there are people. This problem is not going to go away soon, but I promise you to do everything in my power to support any policy, any law, or any violence intervention program that this body can bring forward. I urge you to support the Office of Violence Prevention and fully fund that. I urge you to bring back organizations like Advance Peace and Ceasefire. We have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Yolanda, followed by Zoila?
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. First time speaking publicly here, so thank you for the opportunity. I can, I have a list of issues and challenges that the city has, but listing issues and challenges really has gotten us nowhere. I have a limited time in speaking, so I'll try to get through them and just kind of mention some ideas, and hopefully that you guys can take home and maybe exercise yourselves. The first one is my biggest, I'm in transportation and logistics myself, is the ports. Our port is bigger than Sacramento. There's no reason why District Six having a port should be the last and left and struggling. Our port has so much potential that it can feed the whole city and some. Side shows, I was recently in a, in a meeting, a police meeting. A lot of people know who are doing them. A lot of people are afraid of telling you and the police officers who are doing them. Why not actually support your people and go into the neighborhoods and actually tell them it's okay? And give them that support that they need. Putting more police officers, yes, it helps the ratio of crime to people, but actually being in the community yourselves, the police officers, and engaging, I think that makes a bigger deal. The youth center, $58 million lost. What's the plan? What's next? I mean, everybody knows what happened recently. Everybody knows that it's gang-related. Everybody knows that it's generational. So why not, instead of crying and making a story, or whatever it is that people are so angry about, why don't we feed our children something? Why don't we follow SOCal, Los Angeles, Ontario? They actually have programs in middle school and high schools that teach kids how to actually do taxes, how to actually do things. I just found out there was a program that pays students to become part-time officers. How many of our kids don't know that, that would actually want to make some money because their parents can't take them here or there, right? Cleaning our streets, this is a big bugaboo for me, because I drive my kids from south to north every day. Why are there dead animals in our streets every day and takes days to actually clean them up? Under the charter overpass, there's been a cat that has been dead, deceased, in the middle of that overpass since before you guys got elected. Why are we not doing more? Our kids walk literally every single day, drugs, dead animals, everything that happens. I mean, people actually selling themselves to school. Our kids deserve better, because if they don't, Saturday is gonna happen again. We all know it. Thank you.
Zoila, followed by Deborah Ellison?
Oh, it says followed by Zoila. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Today is a joyful day. I had no note, I haven't even rehearsed what I'm going, going to say. I came to meet the new city manager because he took us almost a year, Johnny, Johnny Ford, for bringing check and balance that is much needed here in Western Ranch. I am Zoila Moreno, and I do represent the voices of the voiceless in Western Ranch, District Six, and I wanna commend our, our, our mayor, because she, she walks the streets where I, where I walk, you know? And when I see her, you know, that when the community goes to tragedy, I always is, I rejoice in her, you know, that she's, she's out in the community, and I'm going to say flower and, and viapul, and padilla, but anyway. I don't see her, I'm, I'm sorry. But anyway, city manager, I hope, because you know, I, I heard that you were a city manager in 2003. If you haven't left this city, we will, you will have saved us. We could have seen a lot of progress in District Six, because you know how I feel? Everybody knows Zoila, remember? Everybody knows Zoila. And, and the difference that, that I'm here giving you a welcome, because when I came to meet Harry Black, I came to greet him, you know, with a big, long list, 20-year list of neglect and decay. But you know what? You're gonna take care of us. Please, support us, because you know, it's like we have been neglected for so long, and you know how I feel and my community feels, that we have a vice mayor, but what we needed was a city council to represent us and be like us. Thank you, God bless you, and moving forward, and good luck to you, okay? Thank you, nice meeting you.
Deborah Ellison, followed by David Sangthai?
And while Ms. Ellison is coming up, I just wanna remind people that speaking out there is, is not appropriate. People need to show respect for one another, so as someone's speaking, you would want them to be quiet when you're speaking, so please pass that on to your fellow community members.
Good evening, Mayor Fugazi, Vice Mayor Lee, and to all the council and everyone present. I'm, I am Deborah Ellison. I'm a lifelong resident of Stockton. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, a local leader with Momsy Man Action for Guns In America, and I'm a survivor of gun violence. In 2018, my only son was murdered after breaking up an altercation between two teenagers. A spat between two people escalated into a violent armed conflict, and my son paid with his life for trying to intervene. My son's story is always with me, but it rushed to the forefront of my mind last week when the 17 people in our community were shot at a child's birthday party. Four young people with their whole lives ahead of them were killed. This senseless violence was all too familiar. The interpersonal disputes spilling over into our community, and innocent bystanders paying the, the price. We must do better than this. Our children are for our community and for ourselves. One of the key policies that make California a national leader in the fight against gun violence is the California Violence Intervention and Prevention of Grant Program, better known as CalVIP, which supports community-based organizations in cities with disappropriately high levels of shootings, directly intervening with individuals at the highest risk of engaging and/or becoming victims of violence. The City of Stockton has been a recipient of these funds over the years and should continue to request them and direct them to programs that can prevent gun violence. The council should evaluate whether recent federal cuts have impacted Stockton's local programs and develop plans to, to fill any funding gaps, whether through city resources, state grants, and community partnerships. No family deserves to suffer the devastating consequences of our ongoing gun violence epidemic that my family, and now the families of 17 more of our community members, know all too well. Thank you.
David Sangthai, followed by Matthew Lester?
Good evening, Mayor Fugazi, Vice Mayor Lee, and council members. I wish I was here on different circumstances. My heart breaks for each of the four children, and I don't care, 21-years-old is still a child to me. I turned 21 in three weeks. I wanna thank you all for your prayers and your public statements this past week. Leadership matters, and I also want to quickly acknowledge Sheriff Withrose and the investigative team as they continue to find who did this to our children. But as we grieve, as our city mourns the passing of these four children, we cannot lead thus, lead this into vague or reactive policymaking. Instead, let us return to what we know works. Evidence-based violence prevention strategies, such as focused deterrence via Operation Ceasefire, a fully-staffed and empowered Office of Violence Prevention, Advanced Peace-style interventions, and of course, support for our most at-risk youth offending and committing these crimes. And in my lifetime, I was born in 2004, the lowest number of homicides, I'm not talking per capita, I'm talking raw numbers, that Stockton has seen was in 2018 and 2019, 33 and 34 respectively. And since I was born, Stockton's population has grown significantly. And this drop in homicides followed years where we had the greatest amount of homicides, 71 in 2012. These reductions weren't luck. In those two years, we had Operation Ceasefire fully active, embodying the principles of focused deterrence, and Advanced Peace up and running, fully funded. And so, you're gonna hear a lot of us asking for and pushing for these solutions to come back. The data does not lie. If you wanna talk about data, we can talk about it. I got it for you. The articles do not lie. We know what works, we know the numbers. So I'm gonna ask questions for the city council to relay back to our city staff. When was Stockton's last call-in? When was the last custom notification for our most high-risk folks delivered? How often are we completing shooting reviews as they take place in our city? When was the last problem analysis conducted? And has OVP's caseload been audited to ensure that we are currently and continuing to engage those most at high risk? And lastly, which California Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, CalVIP grant applications is the city supporting? And why were multiple supported this last grant suit? Why were multiple submitted this previous grant cycle? And so, just to reiterate and make it crystal clear for council tonight, we need to rebuild Operation Ceasefire in its fourth generation with fidelity, full staffing, regular shooting reviews, and constant, consistent engagement with our folks on the ground. Fully staff and empower OVP, reestablish those partnerships with our nonprofits, incredible messengers on the ground who know these youth, who know the folks at risk of committing these crimes. And again, provide clear communication from city, county, and the school district. Thank you.
Matthew Lester, followed by Yolanda Amon?
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Matthew Lester, and I'm here tonight, like all other citizens, to demand real, fact-based solutions to our crime that the youth in our community have been feeling the blunt of. We need, I wanna end to this pointless bickering that has not moved our city in a positive direction. The citizens, citizens of Stockton deserve a council that uses their time and our tax dollars to find actual solutions, and not on ad-hit committees investigating each other. We already know that there are other ways to lower violent crime that doesn't involve giving more funding to our police. We had programs like Advanced Peace and even programs, even ideas of opening the youth center would have reduced crime. I understand that proper vetting is important, but let's not just shoot it down without at least presenting an alternative, because we don't move forward that way. Studies have shown that more programs for our youth to do after school has reduced crime. Understand that our police is understaffed, but using police to keep, to keep unhoused citizens out of a small area doesn't help crime either. Our police spending their time on keeping the peace at protests at ICE facility doesn't help crime either. So I would like to put an end to the name-calling and the fighting that has not helped any of our citizens, and then just realize that children in our city are dying. They have been dying ever since I was a child here, and it's not gonna get better unless we at least do the bare minimum to address the poverty issue. I don't wanna be at the next acting council, the next tragedy where students get injured by gun violence, and we're all just still scratching our heads, wondering what we can do. So it's, action needs to be taken right now, like it should have been taken years ago. Thank you.
Yolanda Amon, followed by Pat Barrett?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council member staff, and our new city manager. I wanna begin by welcoming our new city manager, Mr. Ford. Congratulations, and we in District Six look forward to working with you. I also wanna extend my heartfelt condolences to the families who have lost loved ones, and I offer my prayers to those who are injured or are now in recovery. My topic tonight is the noise. Since this tragic, tragic event, there has been so much noise, and by that, I mean unverified, speculative noise. Everyone seems to have a narrative about what happened and why, but not the who. My first ask is that the community allow the sheriff's department and assisting agencies to do their jobs. We will not have an answer overnight, but we can, all we can do is pray for the families to receive closure sooner rather than later, and to pray for those still in recovery. In the light of this tragic event, I'm asking the council to take a moment to truly reflect on how quickly life can change. I ask you, Mayor Fugazi, to bring this entire council together so you can find ways to create or bring back proven programs that have worked in our city in the past. Every one of you sitting on this dais has the power to change the direction of this city. You cannot ask the community if you're not willing to do the change yourself. The division on this dais makes our city weaker each passing day. We should be able to look to all of you for guidance. This is the responsibility that comes with you sitting in these seats. Many of us in this room have been victims of gun violence in our families, the same as my family. My final ask is that this council put into place long-term counseling and support for our latest victims and family and loved ones. Those who were injured and still healing, many of them are gonna be suffering long-time PTSD because of, of this event has changed their lives. Let's create programs to help them now, and learning how to navigate the new lives that they have been thrown into. The fear, anger, and frustration we are all feeling right now, let's act on it. Let's not only allow this moment, let's not allow this moment to fade to the sidelines, only to, to have this reoccur again and having another one of our youth taken from us. What we are feeling right now should be pushed and to put forward real action so that we do not lose any more of 209's children. Thank you.
Pat Barrett, followed by Andy Abbott?
Pat Barrett, resident, House Stockton advocate for underserved and systemically oppressed communities. Welcome, Mr. Ford. Good luck. Heard you were cutting out your piece of pie from the first month you were here. Hope it was a good one. I want to address the tasteless act that I saw our city perform the last weekend. I was skimming through Facebook when I came across Councilmember Padilla to do a live broadcast of the tree lighting and saying, "Come down, we have kids and families all coming down." I was devastated. I'm sorry. When I heard the news, it just kinda said another killing. When those children's faces were posted, it effed me up, because now it was a reality. I'm sorry for this celebration was not okay with me, nor with the many residents that at the time, when parents were grieving by the senseless loss of their children. Three, excuse me, three that should have been enjoying Christmas with their families and will never be able to. Hold on. You are encouraging to come and to be a part of some sort of resilience. In our hearts, you are normalizing this situation, and that life goes on. The empathetic way this should have been handled would have been postponed till next year. Something is very heartless about this group over here. Another matter, the police department displacing homeless camps in the winter. Someone reached out to me, found me through Facebook and to Messenger, and contacted me, and told me about their daughter who had been homeless, who is homeless. And the other morning, they came to their camp, and they took her tent and everything else, and it was 40 degrees outside. In the same time, as they throw away all her stuff, they now go home and turn on their heater in their houses. Mr. Ford, I turn to you. Please address this matter. What this city has been doing to our homeless is cruel and an unusual punishment. This is not attacking, this is disgusting. No human should be treated like that. You talk to the city, the city says it's the police. You talk to the police, they say it's the city. There's no contract. I don't know who it is. I'm sorry. That's it.
Andy Abbott, followed by Alberto Gonzalez?
Pat, you tiny. So, wrote this for two minutes, and now we got three, so I can take my time.
So, wrote this for two minutes and now we got three, so I can take my time. All right, so, the 2024 San Joaquin County Grand Jury Report, City of Stockton, Crisis in Government, made it absolutely clear, 100% clear, that city council members must stop enabling 209 Times to interfere with city government through their continued association and support of individuals associated with 209 Times. And yet, on what should have been the saddest and toughest week to be mayor of Stockton since 1989, Christina Fugazi dropped everything and rearranged her schedule to meet with a Z-list candidate for governor at the beck and call of Motec made-up name Sanchez. How do we know? He told us so. Here it is, he told us so. Rearranged her schedule just to meet with somebody, nobody. The mayor is supposed to be guarding the hen house, but not only did she let the coyote in, she posed for a picture with him, again, but this time in City Hall. Now, why is this a problem? Besides the mayor wasting time in a crisis for a photo op with someone who's got as good a chance of being governor as I do, it put her stamp on 209 Times. Adding to their clout advances their goals. The report tells us that their power comes from their proximity to power. Legitimizing him in City Hall creates levels of fear of reprisal that paralyze and force complicity again. Some of you know what happens when you cross him. His perceived clout enhances his value as a political consultant, using 209 Times to talk up unqualified clients and trash worthwhile opponents. 209 Times needs that appearance of influence and control to thrive and you gave it to him again. Not only do all y'all need to renounce 209 Times and all their works, I'm calling again on the Ledge Committee. It's time to move on recommendation R1.3 from the report. Let's get this done. A campaign transparency ordinance like they have in San Francisco for candidates and political consultants. Cut this cycle of grift and bad governance off at the root. Put it up for a vote in public and again, get everyone on the record. Let's see who votes for good government and who votes for furthering the rot in City Hall. Distance yourselves from Motec, please.
Alberto Gonzalez, followed by Liliana Udang.
Wow, you took all my words. Well, I just wanted to say, a lot of people sit here and talk about how Jason's platform this, Jason's platform that. But thanks to his platform, somebody stepped up to pay for them for children's funeral costs. You know, and a lot of people, oh, Jason this, Jason that. I mean, we got to put all the division to the side and we have to come as a city because had we not wasted our time doing all these other investigations, we could have been focusing on a youth program for our children. We spent weeks, months investigating each other. We still haven't got to the wilding out, which I thought it was going to be first today, but I see that it's back at the end again. So, and then a lot of the people that come up here from Western Ranch, at one point, I witnessed it because I've been there from day one, wanted to do Sumba with Jason. All of a sudden, Jason's the bad guy. Why did that happen? Did we didn't, we didn't get what we wanted from Jason? So now we decide to talk about Jason? Jason is the best thing that happened to South Stockton since I've lived here all my life. I've been requesting for a bump in front of my house for the greatest children to guide me on how to do it. And guess what? Last week, I got a city bump. I got my stop sign painted red where people can't park no more and I've been asking for more than 15 years for that. So, people don't see it, but I see it. And people just like negative and misery, so they'd rather sit there and say, "Oh, Jason this, he wants to be the center of attention." He don't need to be the center of attention, he is the center of the attention. So I'll leave it at that.
Liliana Udang, followed by Cynthia Gayle Boyd.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak today. It's good to see a lot of you, nice to meet you for the first time, Ms. Ponce and Mr. Ford. Appreciate it. I'm here to talk about the shooting that occurred a couple of weekends ago. And I'm not here to point fingers, I'm not here to blame anybody. We are in the position that we are in because of generations of neglect and disinvestment throughout our community, not just on the south side or the north side, but the west and the east. I'm born and raised in Stockton, I'm raising my children here. And I thought I'd lead off this conversation with just a small anecdote of what I've gone through this weekend with my kid. My son is seven. He loves playing outside, doing taekwondo, and he likes lumpia. So my husband's Filipino. And when we were watching coverage of the shooting, we saw that Bas lumpia was taped off, that whole shopping center was taped off. And so my husband and I said, "Oh, I guess we're not going to be able to grab what we thought we were going to grab." And my son rolls around the corner and goes, "Aren't we getting lumpia tonight, Mama?" And I had to decision. I had to decide whether to shield him from the violence that I've known my entire life growing up here or expose him to the realities that we live in. And I chose the former. I chose to shield him because he's too young to be experiencing that violence. But we know that two of those children were just one year older than him that died. And so what I want to put towards you all is this desire to move forward with unity and an understanding and a grounding in who knows how to do this stuff already. You have numerous nonprofits who work in this community, who are doing the work on the ground day after day with or without funding. It is your job and responsibility to get them that funding, to consistently advocate. Philanthropic dollars don't just fall out of a tree. They are shaken and continuously shaken over and over and over again. So when we say things like Advanced Peace lost funding because it was philanthropic or when OVP is fully funded, OVP is staffed, but it's not staffed to meet the need. That is what we need to be working on. So I implore you all, as you consider the approach you're going to take, to really look at yourselves and question, are we doing this for the betterment of my kids and that generation or are we doing it for points right now? Because what you need to be doing is looking at the data. Focused deterrence works. It does. Working with nonprofits that have a playbook in the events of mass shootings that currently exist here in the city of Stockton, works. You just have to lead and ask. It's not that difficult. We don't expect you to have all the ideas, but we expect you to be receptive to them and work to fund them. Thank you.
Cynthia Gayle Boyd, followed by Noel Valdivia.
Thank God I'm still alive in this danger, sir. I'm shocked and amazed that you didn't start with at least 30 seconds of remembrance for the peoples. Ah, for every man's death diminishes me, for I'm involved in mankind. Oh, my Lord have mercy. Where have the leaders been? I hear a lot of them coming forth. Nah, last week when we was here, I spoke about, ain't nobody worrying, nah. Uh-uh, but I done seen a whole bunch of chit-chat, a whole bunch of press conferences, private shows this morning and whatnot. Ain't nobody really worrying. Ah, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. That's what Benjamin Franklin said in 1735. Now, social value is evidence-based intervention using agreed-upon criteria for benefit and effectiveness. What are all these cameras benefiting, nah? When ain't nobody been worrying, uh, until now. I read an article lately that said, "Concerns raised about Stockton venue weeks before the mass shooting on November the 5th, 2025. A complaint was made about the operating venue there without proper permits." Did the county go there? Complaints about the homeless, I complain about it all the time. What are you waiting on? See, you're great at reactionary nonsense, ah. But what about that preventative measure? I keep talking about the homeless on Eldorado in front of the Stockton Police Department. What you waiting on? Somebody to kill one of them first and then you put the name up on a sign? Get out of here with that nonsense. Now, about the illegal operations of the golf carts that I keep complaining about, what you waiting for? The kid to fall out the golf cart and one of us be charged with his murder? Ah, you gotta get out of here with this nonsense. And lastly, do you know who's in charge of Matty Harrell Park? Whose district is that? I understand that that's where the creeps hang out at. Um, I had considered written it for a little family get-together. When are our kids going to be safe at Matty Harrell Park? When you going to send the police in there to clear out that nonsense? Or will we be standing at another prayer visual someplace? Talk is cheap and that bullshit will run a marathon.
Noel Valdivia, followed by R.C. Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Noel Valdivia and I was raised in this city. So my parents grew, they were farm laborers and we didn't have much. There was not any real programs back then, so we were left to our own fulfillment. And that being the case, I turned to gangs and I got involved in gangs shortly. And then after that, I ended up committing a crime of robbery and in the process, I took a man's life. So with that said too, I want to officially apologize to the city for my actions. And I'm very sorry. But after that, when I, after I got incarcerated, I went, I turned my life over to my faith and I decided that, at that time, I would change my life and I would help people like me that were stuck. And by the grace of God, I got through it. I did a lot of work in prison, built church, and I was given another chance. I have family today. I have young children, 13 and 10. I says, and I'm thinking, and then yet last night, or two nights ago, I found out it was my friend's daughter that got killed. He changed her name because he wanted her to have a chance because of his past behavior. I didn't know until he called me and said, "Hey, it was my daughter." So that hurt. And so now here we are, we're bringing this, I've been here before on the same issues, you know, and what are we doing about it? What have we done? Nothing. And we need to not fight with each other. I read, we read the papers, we see them, you know? You guys are witch hunting up there, taking down the Unified School District woman. I don't even know those gentlemen, but from the time he's come in, he's been working for the city trying to end all this mess. You know what I mean? And I read the article today, that's what brought me over here. You guys are cutting away the programs. I says, "Look, to me, I don't believe you're going to ever stop gangs." You're not going to prevent gangs, but what you can do is you can build an adequate environment to give them a chance to make that choice. To say, "Hey, I'd rather have money in my pocket than to be standing in the corner." I know, I was there at 18 years old. I was arrested for crimes, so I know. And I know how to get through it. I went from prison, I got a chance, I got a family. I says, "I did time and now I work in a prison." Right? And so, I already left you a note to work with you to bring youth into the program.
Thank you.
R.C. Thompson, followed by Alex Lima.
I'm R.C. Thompson, I'm coming as myself this afternoon, this evening. I have a speech, but I'm going to say this. There's decorum on both sides and it was disrespected. Our dignity and our integrity, we hadn't even picked up our babies from the coroner's office yet. That was my family in there also. And there were three generations of social justice leaders in that room too. And their families are crying out, dignity will be had. We will bury our babies with dignity. The crime scene thrown all over the place. It sent chills. And I got phone calls after phone calls after phone calls. As a trauma advocate, we will have dignity for the dead. We will have dignity for our babies first. I speak with sacred rage. You know, I go in love, always. And I'm going to say this, the mediation, the remediation, and the trauma and the generational trauma starts with the daddies, just like what he did. It start with the clergy, because the clergy's kids was in there. From all international faith. Hear me now, come here, family. Go and speak to your ancestors and incent the place. They expected of you, it was not done and the spirit cannot get back to the home. Ritual is happening in the home, but the spirit need to get back to the home that was there that died there. And you know what I'm talking about. Cambodian family, you know what we need. Justice is what we need. You bring in the family members. The question is, who sent the shooter? Who sent the shooter? Stop getting distracted by politics. I am a therapist, I invoke confidentiality. We know things that are happening within our families. We know things and those children that we did not hug are coming up to roost. We didn't wrap our hands around them, we cut 811 billion dollars. And you call the highest lynchman in the United States right now, who putting people of color in jail cells? You stepped over and you spoke to us and you brought up city as a pilot. We are disrespected at the last moment while we agreed, while we're trying to navigate medical systems. And it will stop.
Thank you.
The gangster will stop.
Thank you.
And you will bring truth.
Thank you. Okay. This is your warning.
You will bring truth.
Please ask her to leave. Please ask her to leave. Please ask-
Alex Lima, followed by Brandon Leek.
What's it all? My name's Alex, I'm an educator. I'm an educator, I teach junior college. I am an organizer with the Delta Skywatchers Initiative. I'm also a park advocate as my everyday. And I know we've been, there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion on this podium so far and we're not here to point fingers, we are here to hold people to account. We are elected leaders, we are your boss. And speculation, the rumors that's going on online, we know enough. Children died. It was a two-year-old's birthday party and children died. I would have loved- I would have loved to have seen my elected leaders come together as a unit in response to this. Um, but what I saw was a press conference from an individual. I saw programs from the state being paraded around as some solution to gang violence, when I know, I love me some AmeriCorps programs, but you can't be a felon in AmeriCorps. And the, the, the data shows, AI is coming for all of our jobs. The recent high school graduates and recent college graduates have the same hire rate. So Stockton Scholars isn't the answer either. The answer, like people have been saying, is targeted diversion programs. People have been through this wringer before. This is, this is intergenerational. This isn't new. People have made it out successfully. Find them, help them out. They've been calling to y'all for years, for years. The fully staffed OVP, how this happened in a county pocket? How many times have we talked about the fact that the county pockets have, have a way slower response time than the city? Do you think this would have happened in the county pocket of Lincoln Village? In the county pocket of Country Club? No. This happened in a county pocket should be annexed by the city. But that's another, that's another story. There are long-term services, like the Stockton Service Corps, Stockton Scholars, that's great. But that is not designed to reach the high-risk youth that, that were, that took, that did this. The, the young adults who are actually involved in this stuff, um, that you are parading their reality and their victimhood around state scholars. This, this program, these, these, this tragedy is not a selling point. Our community is in shambles right now. We need healing. We do not need political moves right now.
Brandon Leek, followed by Jaime R.
Sorry, I'm not like the, oh, not the most formal. Hi, uh, what's up, everybody? Um, I, uh, first, I'll give y'all some kudos. Uh, to take the tongue lashings y'all get on a weekly basis on the chin, uh, that's quite a bit. I'm from South Stockton. I, I'm, yeah, anyway. Um, but, uh, I, I guess I just have one quick thing to share. I was recently in Miami. And while I was speaking with a group of folk about where I'm from, um, the most notable thing that was brought up was, I guess, a viral video that had come from one of these meetings. And that was the first thing that was brought to my attention. And for myself, I was like, man, the work in progress that we have put into our city, for the name to not be synonymous with the things on which it once was. I urge us in leadership to please make sure that we do not put ourselves at the forefront. That we take the time to look first for humanity, to look first for service. As, as a believer in Christ, I firmly believe that my sole job is to continue to put my hand out to others. Um, I don't know y'all's face. I'm not gonna urge you guys to do what I would do. But I would urge you that the position that you chose, the position that you asked for, that you petitioned votes for, is one that is for service. One that is not for self-service, one that comes for the sake of other people. And I'm not saying that you're not doing that. I'm just saying that we can do a better job of it. I'm saying that there is still deficiencies being made, that there's still shortcomings to be done. And in that, our humanity comes with those. But not at the rate that they're coming. We have a job to do. I'm not in your position. I don't get the chance to do these things, or make these guidelines or guide laws. But I do know one thing. I will put myself in whatever position necessary to make sure I go serve first. To make sure that people get the chance to be seen and heard. Um, and so in that, when we walk into these meetings, when you go into your personal lives, when you go into the standard workplace, I ask, please, do not look at this as the job that you got. Look at this as the one I continue to earn day by day through the work that I do. Thank you.
Jaime R., followed by Samantha Kelly.
Hi, um, I'm Jaime. I'm with an organization called Dare to Struggle, and we're here with the family of Rocco Robinson, who was murdered by Stockton police officers Kyle Ribera and Ruben Rion. We know that the shooting is on everybody's minds. But we also know that officers like this are on the, are on police forces across the country, and especially out here in Stockton. A police force that, over the past few decades, have killed over thirty people. And has a history of racist profiling against people that look black or brown, or look like whatever they might think. And we know that the killing of Rocco Robinson was a targeted racist murder. And we're here to demand that the people who have the power to put these officers behind bars do so. Because they should be charged with murder. They should be charged with murder for shooting Rocco sixteen times in the back while he was running. They pulled up, they pulled up on him in a parked car. And a lot of people like to address city council. But I know that the people who really can make change, who can actually do something about this, are the people willing to go out to the street and protest and demand some kind of justice, demand that these, these killer cops go sent to prison. Because when we address city hall, we put the power back in their hands. But they're the people who know these officers, who have the power to put them in prison and aren't doing it, who have refused to say anything about this murder, who have refused to say anything about any of their officers murdering people, or harassing people, or brutalizing people in the streets. And that's why I kinda wanna address the people here and be like, it's up to us, and it's up to you, to go out there, organize your people, organize your family, organize your block, and demand justice, demand that killer cops get taken off the street. Because this will happen again. One of the officers that killed Rocco had already killed somebody before, and is facing a lawsuit because of it. He's pending a lawsuit. And the other officer is still on the street. And it's only a matter of time before he kills again. Because clearly, it's part of something that he thinks is okay. He thinks human life isn't worth anything if they look like a gang member, which could mean anything. If you're a young black or brown person in Stockton, or really anywhere in the United States, police think that they can get away with killing you. And so far, the people that we've put in charge have shown them that they can get away with killing us. And so it's up to us to show them that they can't get away with it anymore. It's not up to city hall. It's honestly not up to the DA. They're the ones who can press charges. They're the ones with the power to do something about it. But it's up to us to force them to do something about it. To organize our people, and to really develop our political maturity to stand up and say that we won't take this anymore. That there have been too many police killings across the country. And there have been too many police killings in Stockton. And so we're here again to demand justice for Rocco Robinson. To demand that the killer cops, Kyle Ribera and Ruben Rion, be sent to prison for the murder of Rocco Robinson.
Samantha Kelly, followed by Nat Campbell.
Hi, my name is Samantha. I'm the mother of Rocco Robinson. Um, my son was shot and killed on September ninth this year. And, um, Rocco was a kind young kid. He was not a gang member. And, uh, he was shot and killed in front of friends, families, including numerous children. Um, Rocco was just there visiting family for a barbecue. And, um, it's been three months today. I have not gotten no answers. The only thing I know is that, the only thing I got is a report from the coroner's office saying my son was shot sixteen times. I have not got any information, or any unedited videos, or police report. I can't even request for my son's wallet, his property. And it's just disgusting to me how my, my son's life, my son is gone. And the two officers that killed him is still running around in our community. So what happens now? You know, all I'm asking is, please, you know? They do not deserve to be in the community. Because my son was a good kid. Thank you.
Jail killer cops.
Jail killer cops.
Nat Campbell, followed by Stephen Sasson.
Yeah, there's not much more to add than what they already said. We want these cops behind bars. This family has given, has gotten nothing from the city. It's been three months, and none of y'all have acknowledged Rocco's murder, said his name, any of that. And it's the least you could do. And we're tired of people throwing up their hands and saying that they can't do anything, when, again, it's been three months. There's been radio silence. And you all have power over the police chief, who can take these cops off the force now. These pigs were ready to kill Rocco, whether he had a gun on him or not. Cops kill black and brown men for as much as having lint in their pockets. They put their guns to his back as soon as they pulled up, long before they saw he had a clip on him or anything like that. Rocco was scared for his life, because he knew that racist, trigger-happy cops could get, could find whatever pretext they wanted to murder him and get away with it. And the longer y'all stay silent, you're just confirming what they already know. They're back on the force, they're going to do it again. People in their neighborhood have said that they've seen Officer Rion back on the force, patrolling the same place, the same neighborhood at Pixie and Doree. And we know that after mass shootings like this, there's always going to be increased repression by the police. There's going to be more pretextual stops. There was one on Pixie the very night of the mass shooting. And we know that these cops aren't gonna do shit to make our community safer. Y'all know that. Everyone knows that. That's basic. We know that these cops use the fact that they're in a bad neighborhood to just get away with whatever they want. And that needs to end now. And that ends by jailing killer cops, putting them behind bars, taking them off the force at the very least. Justice for Rocco.
Justice for Rocco Robinson.
And jail killer cops.
Jail those killer cops.
And all y'all know who they are. Stop fucking protecting him.
Yes, and I'm Robert, I'm, I'm Rocco's father. Okay, he ain't, he ain't Hispanic. He's, he's an African. He's black.
South Black, South Asian.
Yeah, that's, he got triggered, cause he was on the west side. He shot him in the back. They didn't even ask him his name, his ID. And all of this was, all of this done for being double parked?
He wasn't the driver either, though.
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, just being double parked, that's not right. You know? His name, he don't know what's going on. You know? But that's what we, we want justice. Cause that's too much. In the community, how many cars double parked right now? You know? That child getting killed? I don't know.
Have y'all seen the body cam footage? He's holding on to a bag of chips.
Justice, justice.
He was holding on to a bag of chips the whole time. He had his back turned to him. He had his back turned to him when he was shot in the back sixteen times.
Sixteen times.
Sixteen times. He was shot in the back while he was running away. Come on, come on.
Jail killer cops.
Jail killer cops. Jail killer cops. Jail killer cops.
Take a recess. Ten minutes. Please-
Alright, starting off at the first recess of the evening, I guess. Anyway, while we're waiting for him to come back...
Listen up, dog owners. Every month Bark Box delivers two brand-new toys that will make your dog lose their mind, plus two full-size bags of treats so healthy you'll be tempted to steal one yourself. But don't. Trusted by over eight million dogs who have literally never written a bad review. We're talking fully customized, tiny terror toys for Chihuahuas, indestructible beasts for your Rotti, allergy-friendly snacks for the drama queens with sensitive tummies, even extra subscriber-only goodies if you want to go full spoiled. Right now, new subscribers get a free extra toy in every box for a whole year, and shipping is forever free. That's twelve bonus toys. Fair warning, once this starts, your dog will sprint to the door every time they hear a truck. So stop letting your dog down and click the link in the description or scan that beautiful QR code and get your first Bark Box today, before your dog runs away. Bark Box, because your dog deserves better. Go!
Guys, have you heard? Nelson, tell the people.
Shady Mob Productions is an official affiliate of HBO Max. Click on the link in the description and sign up so you can watch hit series like Car of Nox, Game of Thrones, and House of Dragons.
Also, don't forget to hit the subscribe button so you can be notified when the latest content drops.
Hey guys, Smacks here. If you guys like gaming, swing over to Twitch, smacks_ttv. Live most nights, stop by, say hi, drop a follow.
Guys, join me, Alex the Man Angelov, and check out 88 Radio where we're going to be talking about the latest and greatest financial news, investments, banking, and personal finance. Check out the channel and don't forget to hit the subscribe button so you can be notified when the latest content drops.
Guys, you're watching a Shady Mob production. Make sure to follow the Shady Mob podcast where we break down all the latest content and talk about life. Please make sure to share, like, comment, and subscribe so you can be notified when the latest content drops.
You're watching the latest episode of N1 from the N-Zone. Please click on that subscribe button so you can be notified when the latest content drops. Now, let's kick it.
Alright, you're tuned into Port City Uncensored PCU 24/7, a pop-up show and stream-sniping the city council meeting. So far, we've had a little bit of drama, some emotions, being let out by the speakers and I guess we're still in the public comments time. This might be a long meeting tonight, so while we're waiting for him to come back, let's watch some action here.
Jail killer cops!
Oh my!
That's right, girlie! I got you now!
By the way, that's what the wrestling federation is about. It's not good. It is a fundraiser for high school students. They're named-
Hey, come on!
Make sure you match it with him. Just get him in there.
Come on, Tor!
BJ's here. Two! Two, three. Twitch here. Hey! Here it goes.
Hey, you're a bad guy!
You gotta be over there, guys, you're not leaving.
I did that.
See, you gotta get out of the way. Come on, Myra, I'm over there.
Dog's a pain. There you go.
One, two! Two CJ! And hit the like button if you're watching live on YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram.
He's out there.
Where else can you watch a city council meeting and some protest and action show?
Come on, Tor!
Oh, that's okay.
Hey!
Oh, you're a bad boy.
Run away!
Come on, your mask is right.
Is this your friend? Come on, Tor! Come on, Rush, he's over there!
Yeah, come on! One, two, three! Come on, try his mouth, come on! Come on, break that up! One, two, three, go!
Hey, come on, come on!
And you wanna break that off?
Ali, you're doing your job!
And come on!
Get in the corner!
Three!
Come on, Rush! Run him down!
Oh, watch it!
Oh, count that!
Oh.
One, two, two!
Three!
There you go!
Come on, Rush! Let's go!
Oh, there you go.
Get him, Rush!
Myra, 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 myra!
Come on! Come on, Myra! Come on, it's nice!
Let's go! Five, six, seven, eight, one, two! Two! There you go!
There you go!
Come on, get out of the front, one! Two! One, two, three! Hey!
All right, now, Rich.
Come on, my girl!
Two, two! Feel like a piggy, girl, come on, he's saying. Feel like a piggy. I wanna make that big bag, boy!
Okay, yes!
Come on, Myra!
Myra, myra!
Come on, Myra!
Emo, girl.
Come on, Myra!
One, two, two!
Three!
Go easy on her.
Come on, Myra, come on, she's got the hair. Come on, get up there, one, two, three! Off the hair, come on, come on! Hey!
CJ, go easy on her.
Get it out, Rush, get it out! Alright, CJ, get out, yeah! You're really, see, now, come on!
You want that spaghetti shit, you want my rush? My CJ sweating, man! Put it up there!
You see that, that's where it's up, kid! Hey, you're losing it! What are you doing?
You've been blinding him in the ring, right?
This is your thing! Hey! Come on, CJ, get out, let's go!
Come on, CJ!
CJ, get out, let's go, one, two!
Finally, Rush, goddammit!
One, two, two!
Three!
Over here! Ah, CJ! Come on, get out, come on! Two! Come on!
He's doing his job, my girl. He's doing his job, like his birthday!
He's mad, he's frustrated! That's him, my girl! Go, come on, Myra!
He told me-
Come on!
Myra!
Myra!
Come on, Myra! Myra! Come on, Myra!
Okay, my-
Myra, myra, myra!
Two!
Myra! Three! Myra! Myra!
Four!
Dragon, George!
Myra! Six, hey!
Get him up, Tor, get him up!
Finish him!
Give him one more, give him one more! One more! Come on, Myra! You better do the six one, man! There you go! There you go!
Fuck, you're in the game!
That's right, girlie! I got you now!
Catch her!
Look, are you okay? I'm just trying to- Ah, no!
Get it there!
Oh yeah, you wanna be Mrs. Tough Girl, huh? I'm Miss Pink Wearin' Santa Claus, girlie, huh? It's done now!
Hey!
Come on, Myra! Come on, Myra!
One, two, two! Two!
Not yet. Be right!
Come on, Myra!
Come on, Myra!
Come on, let me help you.
Oh, yeah.
Come on, Myra!
Come on, Myra!
Yes! One, two, two! Somebody!
Come on, Myra! Get up, Myra! Myra!
Myra! Myra! Myra! Myra! Myra!
Grab up, DJ!
One, two, three! Hey, you're worse! I'm Myri, Myra! And then you! Oh!
Alright, well, looks like they're still in recess over in City Hall. We just saw some action from our friends at TWF, Total Wrestling Federation. Once again, they'll be back in Stockton January 24th, the Fight for Franklin, third annual fundraiser for the wrestling team at Franklin High School. Get your tickets on Eventbrite, come on out and join the fun and the action and help out some young athletes here in Stockton. Okay, yeah, who knows what the hell's going on? They said ten-minute recess and we just got done watching a thirteen-minute match.
Okay, so we are coming back from our brief recess and I just want to let everybody know we would love to continue with public participation in our meeting. However, we cannot have another outburst like that. If there is another one by anyone or group, then we will clear council chambers and then we will call you in one at a time to speak before council. But the rest of the meeting, the chambers will be closed off, okay? Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Steve, okay.
Okay. Hello, my name's Steve Sassen and I've lived in Stockton since about 1985. And, you know, I actually kind of enjoy living in Stockton, you know? Stockton gets a bad rap a lot, but, you know, we all know why. The reason I came here tonight was because of the birthday party shooting. And the thing is, is I personally have never had a bad experience with Stockton PD. They've always treated me with respect and, you know, I guess I'm white or whatever. But, okay, okay, okay. But, but the thing is, is this was a gang shooting. And I saw a newscast where it was suggested that we bring ICE in to solve this crime or to take care of this problem. And the thing is, is ICE is already here. I mean, they're down on San Juan Street and people are going down there to protest all the time because, you know, they just kidnap people. So, I mean, you might talk about, you know, Stockton PD being unprofessional, but I believe they're professional. I mean, according to people, there might be some bad apples. But with ICE, they're all bad apples. And, and to call in a Gestapo force that is basically runs immigration to take care of a gang shooting, I think is foolish. What we should do is instead of asking Trump for ICE to come in, to ask Trump to give us more police funding so we can fund more professional police that do investigative work and don't just snatch people off the street and send them to a concentration camp. That's it.
Samantha Santos, followed by Nerissa Davis.
Hi, guys, so I'm Samantha. I'm a case manager and am the housing director for the homeless population, which is one of the many reasons I'm here tonight. While you guys are all in here creating a circus, being the clowns that you guys are, we have huge, like, serious situations happening in our city that you guys could care less about. Okay, you guys are too busy making a joke of everything. Like, you guys are literally, like, there's people dying, there's kids dying, okay? Like, and you guys want to sit in here, you want to sit in here, mayor, and play a video about your vice mayor making everybody look foolish, okay? Including yourself, mainly yourself. We made national television, do you know how much of an embarrassment that is? Like, you guys are an embarrassment to this city of Stockton, to our community. Like, I don't understand, I think every single one of you, actually, not every single, yeah, all of you, but the only decent person that's on this city council is Jason Lee because he'll actually tell you how it is and put it what it's, put, call all of you guys out. Okay, like, that's the real. Like, I live in South Stockton, I actually live in Weston Ranch, okay? And Weston Ranch has been begging for help for years, years. This Weston Ranch has been asking for help. You know what we get? The spot truck. That's it. Like, which gets vandalized, actually, in the parking lot that you guys put it in. Like, that's the funny part, is it gets vandalized, that's, and it sits there for days vandalized. Like, even now, like, you could care less about anything that's being said in this meeting because you're too busy focusing on everything else that's going on around you. Like, this is all a joke to you and this, like, really? If the city of Stockton is a joke to you, then remove yourself as the mayor. Oh! Is that, are they more important, really? I mean, I, like, this is, you're, like, you, all of you guys are clowns, literally. All of you guys are clowns. And you guys are turning, like, the city of Stockton is burning to the freaking ground because of everything that is happening on here and you guys are turning, like, you guys are just creating a dang circus in here. And that's all that's important to you.
Nerissa Davis, followed by Juicy Edwin.
I would like to do a mic check, everybody. Can you guys hear me? Thumbs up? Okay, perfect. Good evening, mayor, council members, and community leaders. My name is Nerissa Davis. I'm the owner of Forbidden Fruits Art Gallery here in Stockton, California. For years, I've watched families in our city and surrounding cities carry the pain of losing loved ones to homeless violence, gun violence, et cetera, including my own child. Recently, I created a memorial art piece honoring the birthday party victims in our community and it went viral. I normally do a lot of pictures, but this is the first time that I've ever did one that people really cared about. The city of Stockton is saying this painting must be placed on one of these walls here in downtown Stockton, California. I'm kind of nervous, please bear with me. The response was overwhelming, families reached out to me, personal messaged me. Young people reached out, people said the artwork made them feel seen, healed, and remembered because we must remember those who have passed away. We can never forget. So in that moment, I realized something powerful. Art can, can do what statistics, speeches, and policies cannot. Art can touch the heart, art can heal trauma, and art can shift a community. From that experience, I developed a full anti-violence art campaign designed specifically, specially for the city of Stockton and surrounding areas. Okay, bear with me, you guys. The initiative combines healing-centered memorial artworks, public murals, young engagement and awareness messaging that uplifts rather than traumatizes. This project is not just an art, it's prevention, it's healing, it's unity, and it's hope. So my campaign aligns directly with the goals of the office, violence prevention and city commitment to supporting families and protecting our youth. The full concept includes original artworks that I have done and my team and intellectual properties that will, that I will present in a formal meeting if you guys will be willing to have one with me. So tonight, I am simply asking for partnership and for the opportunity to present this initiative to the appropriate city officials. Stockton deserves creative solutions. Families deserve healing and our youth deserve a future.
Thank you.
Where peace is more powerful than violence.
My staff member will get your information so we can talk about putting it up. Thank you.
Juicy Edwin, followed by Bobby Bivens.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Edwin, I am the-
I am the founder of Fatherhood Legacy. The last time I came over here, um, I had left a discussion with Jason Lee being King Saul. The reason why I'm here today is because I want to make Stockton someplace super and I am very tired of Stockton only being on the news for negative media. So, we, there's definitely a lot of improvement for leadership. Um, you know, I think to myself, how are we really going to save the city of Stockton if their leadership's broken? You guys need to come together. You know, I know, um, that the Bible says that to have a childlike spirit, but having a childlike spirit and being childish is completely different. You know? The most simplistic commandment is, "Love thy neighbor as you love thyself." You know? So, I'm putting a request to remove Vice Mayor Jason Lee from the mayor position because you've done a great job in District 6. I commend you on that, I won't take that from you. Badass, the Vice Mayor for the city of Stockton, you failed. Another thing is, you know, you brought up things about Mayor Fugazi, how you helped put her in position with funds and all of that. But the reality of the matter is, someone in your position that has no political background...
Can I make this comment to you, please?
Can you cite where in the policy?
I don't need to cite in the policy what that, the, hold on, hold on, Mayor. Your, your own rules is that people of the public...
This ain't your time to talk.
Mr. Lee, this is your warning. This is your, this is your warning, I'm trying to respond to you, this is your warning.
Point of order, um, point of order.
Okay.
Jason, why aren't you smiling?
And I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let you know.
Thank you.
So, it says here, "The mayor has the affirmative duty to maintain order. This person is not acting out of order. They're not uttering loud, threatening, abusive language, threats or other conduct that disrupts, disturbs or otherwise unreasonably impedes the order, orderly conduct of the council meeting." So, as an elected official, we all have people that, that say things, but there is not a decorum, actual decorum violation.
Well, I did point of order and Rosenberg's Rules of Order require you to ask me what my point of order is.
I heard you say it.
No, I didn't get to say it because you started reading your notes. Can I say it?
Excuse me. Well, we can clear the room. If you want to clear the room, we can clear the room.
Jason.
The audience cannot be participating in this discussion between the Vice Mayor and myself.
So there's a point of order. And the point of order is, um, they can say whatever they want, they just need to direct it through the chair. That's my point of order.
Well, we need to add that then because I read through and that piece isn't on there, so we can, we can add that to it. We'll have to do that at a future meeting. Sorry, continue.
So, you did mention that you helped put Mayor Fugazi in position, but an individual like yourself that has no political background, how could you become a Vice Mayor? You know?
Please keep your...
That is a very important position to fill, it's not something to play around with. And the reality of the matter is, you might have helped her, but you really only helped her to put yourself in position. That's the reality of it. You know, if it wasn't for her, you wouldn't have been picked as a Vice Mayor. Because the city of Stockton didn't pick you as a Vice Mayor. And like I said, I do not take away from what you've done for District 6. You've done a great job, but we need a Vice Mayor that is fully dedicated over here. You've made comments, uh, I believe something about her working as a teacher and, you know, that she should be fully focused as the Vice Ma, uh, being the Mayor for the city of Stockton. Well, why is there a double standard? You're not here full-time and that's all sweet and dandy. I understand, you know, your career and everything. However, where's your priorities? And let's talk about character. If you turned on the person that helped you put, put yourself in position, why wouldn't you turn on anyone else? There's a scripture in the Bible that says, "There is no darkness dark enough to hide a sinner from God." There is a, huh, "There is no darkness dark enough to hide a sinner from God. God does not need a time for us to go and be judged by Him. He does not need an investigation to remove leaders and replace them with others because He knows what they do. He replaces them and overthrows them overnight because they stopped following Him and ignored all His commands."
Thank you.
Bobby Bivens, followed by Jewel Abram.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Bobby Bivens, president of the Stockton Branch NACP, serving San Joaquin County. I'm here to, to speak to some concerns that our membership has and outside folks that are not members. And those are issues not just related to the recent, uh, terrible event that we had here in Stockton, but as relates to the governance that we're receiving as citizens. The behavior that I just exhibited again, uh, in terms of serving and getting information and taking good time to serve the citizens of the city. One of the concerns that I have as a former commis, person that was on the, the, um, city manager's police oversight was just demonstrated by the young people that were here a few moments ago, speaking of the individual that had gotten shot in the back. We need to put back in place, and I spoke to, um, uh, Councilmember Vice Mayor Lee. I spoke to the previous city manager, and I've not had a chance to talk to Mr. Ford regarding putting that back in place, uh, putting a police oversight commission in place. Because when we had the Oversight Committee quarterly, we received data, information, we knew which officers were being suspended, we knew that there was officers being terminated and we knew that we had to stop the, the realm and ring of violence that was taking place by the police. So this is a serious issue. Having that committee and having a balance from the community is extremely important. And I know that you all may or may not, some of you are aware of it, some of you are not because you're new. But that is important for our community and for transparency to the public. The other is that we do, excuse me, I've had a little something. But we do need our image to be reflected in a more professional and gubernatorial manner as people are seeing us all over the country. And I do go around the country and I do hear from all over the country and I hate hearing, "What the hell is going on in Stockton?" I hate it, I truly hate it. It's an embarrassment and we all need to figure out how we can collectively work together because that's what you ran and said you would do. So, as a taxpaying citizen, I need to get my money's worth. Thank you.
Jewel Abraham, followed by Alexis Guzman. Jewel Abraham. Alexis Guzman. Following Alexis Guzman will be Alicia Santiago.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Lee and members of the council. My name is Alexis Guzman and I'm here today as an older sister of 21-year-old Adam Santiago who was murdered on August 3rd, 2025 to gun violence. My family is living with the pain that will stay with us for the rest of our lives. We are seeking tonight, what we are seeking tonight is not special treatment or fairness, only fairness, transparency and respect throughout the investigation into my brother's death. Despite the gravity of this violent crime, the lead detective assigned to Adam's case has been on vacation and/or out of office for what appears to be more than half of his investigation period. This raises serious concerns for us about delays, oversight and whether my brother's case is receiving the urgent attention it deserves. This also leads us to believe that our city simply needs to hire more detectives because no family should have to worry about the lack of staff and standing in the way of the justice. We fully recognize that investigation takes time. We understand that officers and detectives have families and responsibilities of their own, but every day without progress is another day without justice for Adam and another day filled with uncertainty and fear for our family. On top of this, there are crimes happening consistently in some areas of our city and we ask, when we ask, "What are we doing to create a police presence in these areas" where we're, we are being told, "This stuff like this will, will be on happening until we're, far after we're gone." And families like ours deserve to know what is being done to prevent this from continuing. We've been told that we don't have the resources. This kind of stuff will be happening forever, but that's not an acceptable answer. Additionally, many in our community have expressed concerns that Stockton should have per capita, around 700 officers, yet we currently have closer to 300. If our police department is understaffed, then how can families like mine feel confident that cases, especially homicides, are receiving the additional, the attention they require? Tonight, we are asking for accountability, better communication and for reassurance that Adam's case is not going to be neglected. We want to know that the system meant to protect us is functioning the way it should, fairly, consistently and with the seriousness that the homicide investigation demands. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the council for your time and your attention and for giving my family the space to be heard.
Alicia Santiago, followed by Amy Orozco.
I'm Alicia, good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm Alicia Santiago, Adam Santiago is my son. Alexis pretty much said a lot for our family, but I would just like to ask that, aside from all of the turmoil that goes on amongst yourselves, that you focus on what the city needs, we need more officers, we need more detectives. Our kids are being murdered every day and this is unacceptable. The answer that I got from the detective when I asked him, "What are we doing?" Because where my son was murdered is a school. The school that is constantly on lockdown, constantly being plagued by the terrorists in that area. And this has been going on for decades, decades. What are we doing? I don't want to see you guys fighting up here. I want to see you guys working for our community, saving our children because my son didn't have to die. If there would have been a police presence in that area. The officer tells me, "We don't have the resources." It's going to be like that in that area until well and, well after we are gone. That is not acceptable to me as a mother who lost her child. It's not acceptable, he's not the first one to die there. At the skate park, we've had numerous murders there. What are we doing? What are we doing to stop this? I'm angry. I'm angry for all the parents that are losing their babies while we sit here and fight and look silly. Please, focus on what's really important here, which is our citizens. Get it together, that's all I ask.
Amy Orozco, followed by Barbara King. While we wait for Amy, Barbara King.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmen and women. My name is Barbara King. I call it poverty pimping. America is in violation of all the commandments of God. America promotes the madness and allows it. America is participating in a low lifestyle. America is on her deathbed right now because they mistreat black, brown people. Second, they have a sin problem with rules. Crime pays, they're not trying to get rid of the crimes or the causes. People create nonprofit organizations to sell off, sell us off piece by piece. Be ready to get in the ring when people realize they can profit from the pain of black and brown people. We are always sold to the highest bidder. They are not trying to eradicate anything. Crime pays, they create nonprofit organizations to line their pockets, not find solutions. Where is the African-American bill that we asked for? Yet the Asians were able to get one during COVID. Racism, racism is not a crutch, it continues the status quo and that's the problem. We should blame whoever should be blamed for whatever is not right. This is a time to check the right and the wrong. Our kids should be able to dream like no, like they've never dreamed before and believe like they've never believed before. The new generation of kids are not accepting racism. They are saying they will tear up everything. The flag is drenched in our blood, we never accepted the slavery. Let's not pretend this country was not built on the backs of blacks and they know what they have done to us. This country hates the truth because their sin built a kingdom and the truth burns it down. Crack was a way to break down our communities in the eighties. It's digital crack now. There's no Jewish drill rapper saying, "Yo, I'm, I'm a Kiki, I'm a Kiki, spin the block in, kill the Kiki." You, you won't find a Chinese talking about, "Yo, Kineswa, kill the yellow man, kill the yellow man." We are the only culture that has destructive music. It is the only music promoted by the elites. Those are the fellows running the record labels. The music industry promotes murder, self-hate, solutions, resources and more resources, housing, education vouchers, small business loans, student loan forgiveness, invest in black communities, stolen land returned, stolen inventions returned, artifacts returned, general wealth returned, identity returned and reparations.
Amy Orozco.
Hi, my name is Amy Orozco and I came with my family. And they pretty much spoke everything that I was going to say, but, um, we all came together. But I would like to see in Stockton like more, like neighborhood watches, people working together, getting the community work together. When I was in high school, I did, um, used to work with Officer, I believe his name was Reese, retired many years ago. And we did a neighborhood watch as high school kids. We set up this area and we talked, we did, we talked about the neighborhood, Gloria and Amora. We went ahead and, you know, painted, you know, graffiti around, around the plate, around the, the city of Stockton, covered graffiti, working together as a community to better our surroundings. And I think that the kids in this generation, instead of listening to that, the rap music and they brainwash our kids to be, you know, wanting to carry the guns and wanting to, to be violent and just, just not be productive members of society, just to put them out there to clean up our streets and make our streets better and safer for our kids. My, my kids don't even go outside, they don't, they don't play in the neighborhood where we live. Um, my daughter told me she's driving now and she tells me, "Mom, I want to get ice cream." The same day the shooting happened, the massacre, she says, "Mom, when I, you know, I have my license now, can I go get ice cream with my friends whenever I want to?" And I said, "Well, you know, you have a restriction, Amelia, but, you know, when you do, that's over, you can." But now that I think about it, the ice cream shops, it's not even safe for them to go there. So we need to make, come together, bring our people together, the city together and, and protect our families. Thank you.
Edward Orozco, followed by Pandora Crowder. Edward Orozco? Okay. Pandora Crowder?
If I cry, it's because I'm mad. Through the chair. You don't get to use an "I" statement if you're only here for the good. You don't get to use an "I" statement when you put your face on TV to say, "I called, I felt, I did." We are the city of Stockton, we are a community and I have fought. I have fought alongside some of the best in this city to make it clear that we are a community, we are a city, we are family. community, we are a city, we are family. Your I statements, your victim card, it doesn't work. Sometimes what's said less is more. These families, those babies. I am taking time away for my one and a half-year-old grandson to be here to make sure you all hear me. These babies, I have a 14-year-old daughter, I have a 15-year-old son, I have a two-year-old grandson and a five-year-old granddaughter. I may be District Five. We are still South Side. Don't ever forget it. When you say you're here for the South Side, include us. We are not Midtown, we are not Downtown, we are South Side. So if you're going to include South Side, make sure that you reach out. I'm happy to promote. I'm happy to promote and help any of you. I am happy to be there for our families. And probably against public opinion here, I appreciated the Christmas event because I'm dumb. This is the first time I've cried and I've yelled and I'm sorry. I appreciated it, getting to be there and see people smile. It's a lot, but when you only show for the newscasts and then you fly away and then you come back for another newscast, you don't care about us as a family, you don't care about us as a community, you care about your self-serving agenda.
That concludes the general public comment.
Okay, we're going to move on then to the consent agenda. Do we have a public comment on the consent agenda?
We do not.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, are there any items that council would like to pull? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
This is historic. Council, please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to a public hearings item 15.1, adopt a resolution approving the San Joaquin County Multispecies Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan 2026 Development Fee Schedule. I declare the public hearing. Ms. Acasio.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Stephanie Acasio, Director of City Development. I'm here before you.
Thank you. I'm here before you for the annual San Joaquin County Multispecies Habitat Conservation and Open Plan Development Fee Update. Do we not have the PowerPoint? Oh, wrong way. Thank you. The San Joaquin Council of Governments adopted the plan in November of 2000. It is a strategy to balance the need for new development with encouraging the preservation of open space, agricultural areas, and protected species habitat. Participation in the plan is voluntary and provides developers options to mitigate the habitat impacts from their projects. One of those options is to pay a fee that is established through this program. The COG updates the fees annually, and to be effective, each participating jurisdiction must adopt the said fees. The COG also recently completed the required five-year annual analysis of the fees and the methodology and decided to continue using the previously adopted model with minor adjustments due to market fluctuations. The board recently approved that last September. The map shows the plan's fee zones near the city of Stockton. They're identified in a number of colors. In your attachment, you can see the map a little better. The compensation zones are mostly located on the outer parts of the city and are based off different vegetation maps. The zones are clarified based on the habitat types. There's a no-pay zone, open space, agricultural, natural lands, and vernal pools. These designations guide the fees that would be charged by the COG to conduct permitted activities within the plan. These fees are collected by the COG prior to the city issuing building permits and are used to purchase and preserve land throughout the county, including the restoration of land, monitoring and reporting, and biological reviews. For clarification, these fees are often confused with the city's ag land mitigation program. These are two distinct programs. The following table lists the proposed 2026 fees per habitat type. Last year's rounded fees are provided on the right for your comparison. All habitat types are proposed to increase, and that is to help offset rising costs to acquire and manage lands. If the council adopts the fees tonight, they would go into effect January 1st, 2026. It is recommended that the council adopt a resolution adopting the 2026 Development Fee Schedule, and staff is available to answer questions as well as representatives from the COG.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Acasio? Any public comment?
We have none. Pat Barrett.
You can speak and then.
I have, Pat Barrett. I have a question. Can you find out? So on this project here, during Planning Commission, they brought forward 442 acres. They want to have it annexed for warehousing behind the airport. So it's south, south of the airport, on Airport, right, around the railroad tracks. There is a bee habitat over there and a bird habitat on those 442 acres. I complained about it when I went to Planning Commission. My question is, is this a way to bring it back? Because they pulled it the second time they put it back on the Planning Commission. I just want to know, and I'm going to use the word manipulation, to get that land cleared, saying, okay, pay the fee, we have the bees, we have the birds, they're protected, you paid the fee, now you can build the giant warehouse on South Side, which is flooded with warehouse. So I can't talk to staff. My question is, one of you asked forward, would this cover that 442 area also? Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Ms. Acasio, I do have a couple of questions. I know that this is something every year. I wanted to go back to 2015 and see what the fees were compared to now over the 10-year period. I'm not asking you to look that up, though.
Oh, I was like.
No, no, I'm not asking you to look that up, but I'm, I'm just saying that this is something that we do every year, and there are different things that developers can do. As it was stated, yes, they can pay the fee. They can provide land in lieu of the fee.
I believe so, and I don't know where.
Oh, she's right here.
Oh, apologies.
Yeah, sorry.
Representative from the COG would probably better answer since it's their program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I was saying they could provide land in lieu of the fee. They can do a combination of redesign the project. Is it pay part of the fee or how does that work?
So they can pay the fee in full, they can bring land in lieu. There is a portion of the full fee that goes towards land in lieu, so they are paying a fee, it's just lesser. Or they can redesign their project for no impact, which sometimes that doesn't always work out. Or they can opt out of the plan because plan is voluntary. But if they opt out, they have to go through state and federal fish and wildlife agencies and deal with that.
Yes. So a question was asked, so, you know, I know, I'm thinking of like the Williams Act and things like that, but this is separate from that. So is there then a space set aside for habitat?
Yeah, yes, it, it mostly is outside of city limits. We don't typically purchase land for habitat within the city of Stockton or all the other cities, but then San Joaquin County. But it's mostly on the outskirts. We try to conserve in the delta and protect.
Mr. Bivens? Mr. Bivens? Okay, thank you.
So we try to conserve in the delta. It's highly protected. We don't want development out there. It's mostly agricultural because that's a large portion of our county. We do protect ag lands near slews to protect the riparian aspects of our county. But, but most of it, it's within the county. So there's less people, less impacts, the species can flourish out there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. I declare the public hearing closed and bring it back to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, now we are moving on to new business. I wanted to go ahead, even though we're actually doing pretty good on time tonight. I gotta see, I can't really tell by that time. We are going to go with 16-3, then 16-1, then 16-2, because 16-3 was carried over from the last, the last meeting. Okay? So 16.3, discussion regarding the potential expansion of the scope of the Wild and Out Councilmember Vila Pudra?
Yeah, Mayor. I ask respectfully that Vice Mayor would excuse himself on this item.
Okay, I, I know we received an email and city attorney, do you want to review the email that you shared with, with all of us up here?
Yeah, I won't talk about this in public. It's advice that I gave to the council, but I will tell the, just for the, you know, public's information, I did give advice explaining that anyone who believed that they had a conflict without the opportunity and the benefit of getting a written opinion from the FPPC fully resolving that issue, that the most conservative advice and the best thing to do is to recuse yourself. And if you do not recuse yourself, this is a redux of the conversation we had when this came up back in August, where, you know, the violation in this particular context is on the individual council member, not the city.
Okay. So I don't know if anybody wants to recuse themselves from this item, but, okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the people of the public watching, I'll post a video of Councilwoman Padilla on stage at the same event. I'm the one that got the letter about recusing. I think both of us have been a subject of this investigation, therefore both of us would be recused. I'm the only one that got the letter. Obviously, we understand what that's about. I got advice from the FPPC. I'm not going to share that publicly, but I won't be recusing myself.
Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you. I was asked by Vice Mayor Lee to introduce him at the event. I did not receive a ticket. I didn't receive any promotional material. I wasn't on any promotional advertisements. I didn't receive a T-shirt, even a bottle of water, so I don't believe there is any conflict, so I will not be recusing myself.
Councilmember Bauer?
I'm just curious about this, the meat of this item itself, to expand the scope of the investigation and include a review of whether the Vice Mayor's failure to recuse himself from the discussion and vote regarding whether to initiate the Wild and Out investigation as a violation of city or state law, including the FPPC Commission regulations. My question for the city attorney, what is there really to investigate? I mean, we know he didn't recuse himself, he was there, so, I mean, what are we talking about here? Also, an FPPC violation, if that's a concern, couldn't the mayor just file a complaint with the FPPC and let them investigate it?
I'm going to work my way backward. So the answer to the last question is yes. Any, anyone, including the mayor or anybody else, has the right to submit a complaint to the FPPC, in which case, as the enforcement entity, they'll do an investigation and they'll come up with, you know, an end result and act accordingly. With regard to why we're here, I'm going to have to redirect that question to the mayor because this was put on by her, and this is her item.
Yes. So I, I'm happy to answer. Part of it has to do with, you know, that night, there was a lot of discussion, there was a restating of the motion multiple times, there was an amendment that was requested and the motion was amended. What was not included was the, you know, recusal, because we didn't know if anybody would or would not. So adding the recusal, the failure to recuse, was the addition to that. And it also, but it was stated in there, I have a timeline, but it was stated in there as well as FPPC, but Section 1000 of the city charter and then, because it says city or state law, state law is the 1090. Did I answer your question?
Kind of, I mean, a bit, but I want more details like, it seems like the thing's already done, right? The investigation, you're just adding to it? Is that what I read in here? The council-initiated investigation is now complete as it pertains to the original scope?
Yeah, and it's.
I'm just saying, like, is this going to take like a week to do? Is this going to be months? Is it going to cost any money?
I don't, I don't imagine that it would take months to do. It was simply to add the recusal or the lack thereof to, to the investigation, just so it's all out there in one package. So there would be then the recusal, then at the, I want to say August 26th meeting, and then the recusal at, at tonight's meeting.
So again, who's going to do the investigation?
No, it's the same.
Same?
Same, yeah. We're not.
You're just adding like a paragraph, talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have my button pulled and then you called on Councilmember Bauer, because I was going to request that this item be pulled because I too needed to understand the intent behind this request. So it's my understanding that within the investigation into Charter 1000 or 1090, if we don't include this as we voted for it, then it's incomplete. Is that correct? Because that's part of the charter. Can someone answer that question?
So I, I'm going to try to understand your question. You're saying, what's the purpose of expanding the scope? Is it to address the Charter Section 1000 in addition to the 1090 violation?
So within the Charter, Section 1000 and 1090, it is to include the recusal wording.
Yes, I think the mayor just said both recusals.
So if we don't do that, then we're not, what do I want to say? We're not conducting the investigation that we all have voted for, meaning that it's incomplete, basically.
No, the investigation and the direction that you originally gave as a council, that's complete, that's been done. This is additional because it was not addressed back then, and this would additionally add tonight's failure to recuse, as I understood the mayor's conversation a minute ago.
Okay, so I'm going to put it in layman's terms. I ordered a cheeseburger, I get it, has no cheese, so I send it back to get fixed. Is that basically what it is?
I, I mean, I understand the concept you're trying to convey, but the direction that you gave, and we went back and pulled the transcript, so the direction you gave did not include the cheese, but now you want to add cheese. So we're, that's what I'm waiting for, the direction on whether you want to do that.
But it's my understanding that Sections 1000 and 1090 includes recusal.
You, you can have us look into that. You could have had the investigation to include that as part of the scope, yes. You did not. Now the mayor would like to add it in, and that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you. I have my explanation.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to state for the record, in the midst of a massacre in our city, we're talking about Wild and Out again. I just want to put that on the record. You know, the challenge that I have when the public comes and says that they want us to get along, I have every intention to get along. I've sent emails to have mediation, I've talked about an intervention, those calls have not been returned. In fact, I sent an email about this matter and said, in light of. In fact, I sent an email about this matter and said, in light of what's happening in our community, take it off the agenda, file the FPPC claim, and let's move forward. I want to read the staff report that's available to members of the public. One of the summary paragraphs says, now that the existing investigation scope is complete, the existing scope that the taxpayers paid for, that this council voted for, that I did not recuse myself for, is complete. We have the findings. I want to just remember, remind everybody, August 5th, the former interim city manager sent out a press release that said that staff used $50,000 of an unapproved fund, or whatever, to help my friends benefit. Councilwoman Padilla just said she was onstage and, and, and introduced me. I didn't get a ticket, she didn't get a ticket, but this is not the forum to argue whether or not there was any wrongdoing, because the city attorney has the findings that the taxpayers paid for, and she should have released already, but can't, because this council wants to add cheese to its cheeseburger. Here's the thing, the FPPC complaint can be filed by anybody for free. We don't need to expand an investigation and pay more taxpayer dollars to pursue nothing. That is not the priority of the public, and so what I would suggest is that, again, if anybody believes that anybody up here, me, Councilwoman Padilla, anybody else who's onstage, violated anything related to the cheeseburger, and want to file cheese with the FPPC, they have the right to do that, but taxpayers shouldn't pay for it. Obviously, you know, if this moves forward, what I would say is, minimum, the taxpayer should at least receive the cheeseburger without the cheese while you go in pursuit of cheese.
Before I go to Councilmember Vila Pudua, I would like to interject a little on this. This was on a prior agenda. It was in the November meeting, long before the unfortunate tragedy happened. We need to make sure that all of the accountability is directed towards making sure that no stone is left unturned, and I just want to say, you know, my focus remains on victims. It remains on justice. It remains on having this community heal, and leading with integrity. We can't, we can't move on without finalizing this, in terms of this one item. But we, as a council, we all showed up at the vigil, we all said yes, we would work together. I, I think consent agenda kind of showed that to me tonight, just because this was the first time that everybody has agreed on that. But, you know, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be politicizing tragedies. We've heard that from, from the public, but we can't use it either to shield someone or to relieve ethical responsibility. So that's it. Our community is hurting, we know this, but we still have to finish up this item, and then we're done with it. So, Councilmember Vila Pudua?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I agree with everything you're saying. So having said, I want to make a motion of the scope of, of the Wild 'n Out investigation to be expanded to include review of the Vice Mayor's failure to recuse, including potential violations of the city charter, section 1,000, of California Government Code, section 1090, including any prior failures to recuse, such as August 26th and tonight's meeting as well, and taking any legal action necessary of the charter, unacceptable law violations are found.
We do have public comment on this item, so there was a motion. I, I don't hear a second, but we will go ahead and go to, to public.
Alberto Gonzalez?
I just wanted to say, it's sad that Stockton never has nothing, and the only time that we did have a great time, with no gang shootings or nothing outside, becomes an issue. So that takes us back to a boring city, where we can't have nothing, because events get investigated. Can we just put this past and move forward, and try to get justice for these kids? It's sad. I mean, Wild 'n Out was wild. The name says it all. Padilla, I mean, sorry, I can direct it to her. The council enjoyed it. It was a great time. Are we being petty because something positive came? The city made some money? No one took no money. The city made money. I've been going to these concerts lately, they've been coming, it's been great, you know? I got a concert coming this Friday, I believe. Stop taking the fun from Stockton with nonsense.
Juicy Edwin?
So, the issue was not about the Wild 'n Out specifically being entertainment, it was more about, it could have had a more positive outcome to empower the youth. It could have been structured completely different, and there were, actually were fights at the event, just because, you know, there was alcohol involved. But this just goes back to the reason why I say that Jason Lee is unfit to serve as Vice Mayor. The event was funded with public money, using city resources. It was only possible because of the authority and the position that he has. If he had not been in that position, the alleged funds would not have been able to be of use for that. One of my biggest concerns was that, it was alleged that it was a sold-out event. It was not a sold-out event. You know, I went to the Lil Wayne concert, way different counts, so that's a little misleading to the public. The second thing is, you know, the aftermath about, when the whole Wild 'n Out investigation came about, how he was trying to have people, he's pretty much intimidating residents and medias from posting about the event online, violating our First Amendment, our anti-slapp protections, and the public figure, public figure doctrine under New York Times versus Sullivan. You know, when you become a Vice Mayor, you're there for criticism. It's just how it works. So being able to take that right and put fear into the community, you know, that's not right. So it kind of makes me think, like, okay, if you weren't doing anything wrong, why are these little extra actions? You know, if you have nothing to hide, it is what it is. Now, I'm not saying that there's nothing wrong with the, having a Wild 'n Out concert, it's just, it should have been more geared towards empowering the community, where it wasn't focused on a small demographic. It should have been open to the entire public, because, you know, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that you had to have, you know, you could have made it to where, before the concert, you could have brought kids and had them talk about, hey, this is how I got to this stage. Don't give up on your dreams. Do this, do a little meet and greet, because it's all about empowering one another. So that was just my issue and concern with that. Other than that, you know, I'm glad that you were able to bring it here, it's just, it could have been structured differently to have a greater impact on the city of Stockton.
Pat Barrett?
Okay, dude, I really apologize to you, but you don't know anything you're saying. Pat Barrett, resident, I'm sorry, you know, he's talking and you're shaking your head, and I'm like, please don't give him affirmation of what he's saying, because he didn't know anything what he was saying. Here's the thing, enough is enough, okay? You can't keep coming back saying, we need to add this, we need to add that. You said on your podcast, at the vigil, we need to leave the past and move forward. We have results. It is what it is. This one always wants to jump first motion on this poor man over here. It's not a witch hunt. We gotta stop doing this. Jason gets more reviews about how he's changed, how he's moved forward, and he's continuously fighting this battle, you know, with a couple other council members, to be progressive, to move forward, to get this stuff done. When people like him and me, and we leave the city, and we come back to the city, and it's still on the same page that when we left, it's the hardest thing to figure out what happened to our city. I'm not from here. I came back here. I love Stockton. It was live back in the seventies and eighties, you know? There was. And there was money to be made. But, you know, the bottom line is, we gotta stop. The results are in. Deal with it, accept it. And I'm gonna say, Mayor Fugazi, please, let's just move. This is cool. There was a few. We shouldn't let people, you know, character assassination, you know? And it does rile people. Let's just move forward, take the results. It happened, the money's gone, whatever the problem is, if nothing's there, let's just work with it. Please, I'm begging you. This could turn the table for you.
Yolanda Amon. I don't even know where to start. I'm just really confused. I've been kind of reading this, what you wanted to do, why you put it on here. It got bumped, and I'm just not sure what the goal is. Now, once you add this, and then if something else happens on the dice, you guys start fighting, or these two start fighting again, then you're gonna turn around and add something else? And then what would stop something, or any of you deciding, oh, you know, District Five, you know, he said this or that, now let's add this. Let's go back and find out something happened to him, now let's add this. Let's go back to Padilla's District One. She did something, but okay, let's go back and look at it. Okay, I'm kind of mad at her, so now let's add this. It seems like this is more personal than anything, and that's why Blower is having a hard time wrapping his mind around, he's trying to find the meat of it, I know you love to say that, to see what's exactly going on. I don't see the meat. If there was something there, I would be for this. If there was something there, regardless of where I live, I just don't see the meat here, and this seems personal, really, really personal. Them two are never gonna like each other, that's fine, but at the end of the day, you guys are on this dice together. You work for me, you work for the city, you're gonna have to find a way to get along. You can't start pointing fingers at each other in the play yard here, and that's kind of what's happening. I just don't see the meat of this, because I don't know when you're gonna stop. If you do this, it's gonna let anybody add anything to anything that any of you do. I don't think you realize that, all of you. So please stop and think about what you're doing, because this is just wasted time, and especially if my tax dollars has to go toward this, I would rather it go to the police and all of these other agencies that we need to help stop this crime in Stockton. Thank you.
Ralph White?
Good evening. You know, I was just listening to your attorney. I impeached Randi Runk. The only mayor have ever been impeached in the state of California was impeached right here, under the 1,000. You're not supposed to take anything of value, not even a pincer. A pincer got a value, a five cents. You're not supposed to take anything of value. And I don't know when the hell y'all got this attorney from, because let me tell you right now, a federal judge who judged ours when I impeached him, it took six votes, five votes out of nine to impeach, six votes out of nine to impeach Randi Runk, the only person I ever got, for less than $40,000. You got $170,000, and you act like it's not anything. Well, I can look at all of y'all if you're sitting there, so I'm sorry, I'm not calling on names, but if the shoe fit, put that sucker on. But $170,000, that's not no chump change, that's a whole lot of money. You have to think about it. $40,000 was nothing. I impeached. He had to walk for stealing from the city. Anytime you do your investigation, do it thoroughly. Investigate. Subpoena all of the records from how, from that Wild 'n Out. Subpoena the records and see where did the money go. See how much each person got out of it. Everybody got something that was in it. There's nowhere in the world you gonna get rid of $170,000 of the city's money, and we act like that. Ralph White had have took $5, damn it you'd have me up there on trial. Jason Lee had them to check every house I own, every piece of property I own. He ordered the chief, your dumbass used to be city manager, to order the chief to investigate through quota enforcement of every property I own.
Mayor, one order. He needs to stick to the topic.
I'm sticking to it, but I'm sticking to the point of how money come up missing, and if you can do that to anybody else, you can do it to anybody, but $170,000 subpoenaed, get your federal judge or something looking at. Y'all playing with peanuts, because none of you know anything about an impeachment. You've never done anything. And the only person sitting there that know a hell of a lot about money is you, Mayor. You know numbers, and everybody know it. $170,000, a whole lot of money. I don't know who got it, how much came out of it, but you ain't gonna bring those little people that come in here. Hell, I, I hire entertainers all the time. So you have to do what you have to do. Have an outside investigation. $50,000, you waste your money, because you didn't get nothing from what I hear right now, unless we can all see it. But I guarantee you, you give me $25,000, and I'll get you a damn good investigator. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Padilla. I mean, why don't we just make a bet? If I took $50,000, I'll quit. If you vote to move forward and there's no findings, you all quit. I mean, at the same, like, you know, at some point, we have to stop playing with the public's time and money. I don't need $50,000. Everybody up here knows I got it. Superman is upset because I want to introduce him to Floyd Mayweather. This is not Showtime at the Apollo. This is not about introducing people to-
Mayor.
This, this is not about introducing people to my friends, this is not about making people famous, and I understand for a lot of people, when you address me, it's your, it's your time in the sun. But here's the deal, the investigation is done. That's what Councilwoman Blower pointed out. I think the mayor, all of us acknowledged that, the city attorneys already acknowledged that. The taxpayers have paid for the investigation. Release that. If anybody in the room, anybody, believes that I should have recused myself, anybody and everybody in here can write to the FPPC and file a complaint. I've already contacted the FPPC, I feel confident in the response I have. It's everybody's individual right to pursue that, and if I've ever done anything wrong, or will do anything wrong, because I'm not perfect, I will be held accountable, and I'm fine with that. Accountability is not a bad thing. Here's what I would suggest. I think the mayor pointed out there was a motion and no second. I would like to make a motion to re-release the investigation report that is already concluded, and then if anybody else has an additional complaint that they file with the FPPC, and if there's findings, we'll bring that back to council. So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Go ahead, Councilmember Enriquez.
Thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I just want to iterate just a couple of things. Mayor, I know you mentioned, and I agree with you, that the timing of it, and I know how difficult it is, the fact that this item was placed this time after the mass shooting, so I, I want to acknowledge that first, because I know the timing of it all. I also appreciate the fact that we were able to move this up to the beginning of this section, knowing that it was in the last meeting, so I also appreciate that, surprisingly, surprised, but in a good way, so thank you for that. The, the thing is, I know the timing is bad, we also have to acknowledge that there is a time and a place. There have been past meetings where we have said, we have to respect the vote, the vote is what it is, we're moving on. I think there's even times even the mayor said that. We have to respect the vote. When we voted on the investigation, the four-three, we voted on the scope, the original scope of what we intended to do, and that was voted on. And we've heard in the past, respect the vote, we're moving on. Even when we try to make amendments, it is what it is, we're moving on. So people have already taken time and effort to do this investigation, so for me, I think it would have helped me better if I would have seen the investigation summary report of what the staff and the folks have done to already, and your taxpayer dollars have already been worked into, to see what it is. Knowing the dynamics of the community and what's happening, the fact that this is now back to expand, isn't appropriate, and isn't the right time to do it. Instead, if there are folks that have a problem with this, I would have, behind the scenes, and city attorney, you had said that anybody can file, could have filed this complaint. I would say, if anybody, if any one of us voted on this, we all should have known that there was something to say, hey, you know what, we have to include this. There is nothing illegal to say that, since we didn't include it, we did something wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. If that was an error, I'd rather you admit to the error, because sometimes some of us up here have a lot of big egos, let's put it to the side and say, you know what, I made a mistake. I ignore- I acknowledge it, and now I'm gonna do my own part and report it to the FPPC. Because right now is not the time and place to have this discussion. Again, I know the timing is challenging, and I respect that. But knowing what's happening down in the community, this could have been taken offline and reported to the FPPC. If it's something that truly does bother you, whoever that is, I'm not saying anyone directly up here. But if it is such an issue for you, then do it privately, and let's move on. But I think the last thing anybody wants to see, knowing the dynamics, and city manager and the presiding officer have the ability to craft the agenda. So, knowing the dynamics, I don't think this is the right time to do it. And it could have either been pushed back down the road, or it could have been done privately. But I can't support this if, again, I haven't even seen the summary of what you all voted on, and, you know, time and energy has already been spent on.
Thank you. Do you mind if I, just real quick? So, I just wanna say, you know, horrific tragedy, but we cannot deflect, we cannot ignore, we cannot distort. We have to make sure that we hold everybody accountable. At that night, on that night, it was not that it was necessarily a mistake, it was something that was inadvertently left out. And just FYI, it's more than FPPC on this, but that recusal should have been included, and it wasn't. And the motion wasn't made with it in there. That's why I brought it back, to add that to it, and that's it. That was all my attempt was. Because we, we talk about, you know, transparency, I'm giving you my transparency on that. It needed to be added. It wasn't. It was an oversight then. Because I personally thought that Vice Mayor might have recused himself. So, I didn't even think about it. I hadn't considered it at the time. But then, going back, that's why I'm like, oh, my gosh, we need to put this on the agenda, which is why it was on the last agenda, and not, we didn't get through the agenda, so.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't gonna say anything, but you said it a couple of times, and I just wanna say, you know, and again, history and the evidence is out there. When the shooting happened, I was the first to post a public acknowledgement and reach out to the families. And I also reached out to you. You were the second person I text after I called the families, and you still have not called me back. So, when you sit here and you say that people are using the tragedy as a way of absolving-
Mayor, call the question.
...the accountability. Hold on, I'm okay with being held accountable. What I'm saying is, release the report, but let's stop politicking the incident, and just be very clear that the initial allegation, for those that may have forgot, was that I somehow used my position to get staff to give my friends money to do an event where they lost $170,000, and the city made $640,000. That then led to a staff investigation. The staff was brought back to work. They then launched an investigation on me. We now have the results, and we're not releasing them. I'm saying, I want the results, and if I did anything wrong, I want to be held accountable. All the media is here to cover that. Release the results. And then, if anybody believes FPPC was violated for not recusing myself, send that off and not make the taxpayers pay for it. And then, if there's findings from that, bring that back to council and share it with the public. It's really simple. It's just, it's just that the members of the council have to do the work in filling out the papers and sending it in, and then owning the response, versus the taxpayers paying for more of this nothing. Release the report. So, there is a motion and a second.
There is a motion.
Mayor, and thank you for allowing us to have this discussion. And I do agree that what we're dealing with, just as a caveat, is a lot of what was here before. And I know we're just trying to get the things off our plate to check off. So, I do wanna say to the public, this is stuff that we are dealing with from the past that we're trying to get through. What I'm only offering to be a middle ground here is, release the findings that's already there, and that'll be that. And then, if there's an additional issue or interest, send it over and let them do what they need to do.
Okay, so, in summary, Councilmember Blower, I mean, Blower, you did make a motion, but Councilmember Villa Pudua did a motion. There wasn't a second.
I liked the second.
Well, I did a motion.
Okay, we're gonna go, yeah, but yours is secondary, so you should go first.
There was no second.
No, no, you go first. I'm just gonna, we're gonna do your vote right now. Okay? So...
So, Mayor, can you, before we go forward, can you just state what's going on? Because, so, there's, what's, just please-
I heard, what I heard was, release the report now, and then we can go back and revisit this, if we need to.
Well, my motion is, release the findings from the original investigation, and if there's any individual with the need to pursue the recusal, that they submit it themselves and not have the taxpayers pay for it. That's my motion and the second that I received.
Okay, so, so there's a motion on that, and a second.
Mayor, I made the first motion, but we waited.
But, that's a second motion, and it goes first. The second motion goes first.
Mayor, I need clarity.
Excuse me, people?
I need clarity on the alternate motion. It's, release the original investigation report. The original direction from the council back in August was to bring it back publicly, to have that released. So, is it, release the original investigation report at the next meeting, at the meeting after that?
Yes, at the next meeting. And also, the amount of money that we spent from the taxpayers to do the investigation was also required.
Already included in the original direction.
Okay, so, that was the motion and the second. Okay? Councilmembers, please vote. Motion does not pass 4-3. We can still clear the chambers if needed. I don't wanna do it. So, okay, so, that, that motion then fails. So, the item is still here if we don't have a-
I'd like to do a second.
Of course you would. Can I amend the motion?
No, we have to have, we have to have a new motion. Well, no, we go to the first motion, but there wasn't a second, so we need a new motion.
Right. Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we release the first report and submit the second part of this. If you want to extend it, release the first part. And if you wanna do the second investigation, have the taxpayers pay for it. The taxpayers can just remember that when it's time to do your elections in the upcoming campaign. But that would be a compromise. So, you release the original report at the next council, which is the 16th, with the cost that it costs, and the findings. And then, the additional piece of that is that if you all want the, if the majority wants the taxpayers to pay for an additional investigation, which is expanding the scope, then that be okay, but then that can come later. So, we don't delay the findings from the first investigation that's already complete.
Mayor.
Okay, so, we have a new motion.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but for clarity, I heard, release on 12/16, and if you wanna expand the scope, bring it back. Bring it back when?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So, we would release the report of the original complaint at the next meeting, which is next week. And expand their scope, because that's what they want, to go to, that the taxpayers will then pay for that. So, that's in addition to releasing. So, we'll get the first report next week with the findings and the cost while they pursue, because FPPC could take two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and the community wants this to be over. They wanna pursue it. And so, that's a compromise, where we get the findings, we get the cost, and then they can continue on in their pursuit.
Okay, so, what I heard was, release the original report, release the report from the original scope of the investigation at the 12/16 meeting, and expand the scope results to be brought back at the next available meeting following completion of that expanded investigation.
I know, the crowd is talking, so I can't hear her. Mr. Vivid, Mr. White, please.
I couldn't hear.
Okay, Mr. White.
I couldn't hear, sorry.
Make your warning.
Mayor.
Sorry. I couldn't hear, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, City Attorney, can you restate that?
I heard, release the original, the report from the original scope on 12/16, at the 12/16 meeting, plus expand the scope as requested at tonight's agenda, and bring back those results at the next available meeting following completion.
Correct.
Mayor.
Councilmember Villa Pudua?
Mayor, on my motion, it was public comments, so it didn't get voted on when they had public comments. So, it was supposed to come back for me to make that motion.
Well, you can make another-
Or to make a motion. I'm asking now.
I just made a motion.
Yes, so you seconded it, okay.
I'm making my motion, that the scope of the existing Wild 'n Out investigation to be expanded, including review of the Vice Mayor's failure to recuse and potential violations of Section 1090 and Section 1,000, including failures to recuse such as August 26 and tonight. So, I wanna take legal action as necessary to enforce that the charter be acceptable law and violations are found.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, we have two motions on the floor, but, and Blower did second the most, sorry, we have two motions on the floor. Councilmember Blower seconded Vice Mayor Lee's. Then, we had Councilmember Villa Pudua do a motion, seconded by Councilwoman Ponce. Do you need to reread that one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you'll turn on your- Thank you. It was to expand the existing scope of the Wild 'n Out investigation, to include a review of whether the Vice Mayor's, Vice Mayor's failure to recuse himself from the discussion and vote regarding whether to initiate the Wild 'n Out investigation, and additionally, failure to recuse himself on tonight's vote on whether to expand the violation, expand the scope of the investigation, is a violation of city or state law, including the Fair Political Practices Commission regulations. Bring back the completed results at the next available council meeting following completion of the investigation. And then, I believe, Councilmember Villa Pudua, you said something about the charter that was a little more expansive?
Review the Vice Mayor's failure to recuse, including potential violations of the Charter, Section 1,000, and the California Government Code, Section 1090, include any prior failures to recuse, such as the August 26 council meeting, and as well as tonight, and take any legal action as necessary to enforce the charter and acceptable law if violations are found.
Okay, so, I think it was captured in what's already here with the addition of tonight's failure to recuse. And then, I think that the language is a little bit different, but still covered under number three, under the recommendations.
Okay, so, we're doing this motion first, and, what?
His motion first.
No, he, he was the first motion, but then this is the second one, so this one goes. No, we go backwards. So, we're doing Councilmember Villa Pudua's motion now, which, they actually sound very similar for the most part. So, and that is also to release the information? I'm sorry, I'm asking, because I didn't hear it then, if there could be an amendment. It is to be released, though, upon completion.
Yeah, on completion. I think that that was a given.
Okay, just making sure, with the cost and everything else.
And just point of information, Mayor, we, just really briefly, this would also apply to any other council member-
Yes.
-that were-
Any, any other council members as well. Okay? Okay?
Is that acceptable to you, Councilmember Villa Pudua?
Oh, sorry, any other council member.
Is the statement that Vice Mayor Lee and Mayor Fugazi just made regarding any other council member acceptable?
Any other council members.
Okay, and is that acceptable to you as the second Councilmember Ponce?
That's fine.
Then, yes.
Okay, okay, council, please vote. You guys are so smart. Yes, four to three, with Councilmember Lee, Blower, and Enriquez voting no. So, sorry, I couldn't help myself, I'm so sorry. Okay, moving on then to our next item, which is 16.1. We're going back to that. And this is, oh, this is hopefully some, a little silver lining here, except the fiscal year budget 2024, 2025, second and third quarter status update and authorized budget amendments.
Good evening, council. Brandon Sepulveda, interim budget officer. Tonight, I'll be going over the fiscal year 24, 25, second and third quarter budget update. Some context for this presentation, the information presented is cumulative through the end of the third quarter, which is financial data from July 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2025. This budget update is provided for informational purposes. The projected results are unaudited and reflect our best estimates based on currently available information. Further context, city staff analyzes the city's expenditures and revenues quarterly and provides reports to the city council and to the public to make, to make financial recommendations in response to financial activities, and to perform routine financial operations that require council's authority to complete. So, let's see. Moving on to our third quarter FY24, 25, general fund revenues. As of March 31st, 2025, general fund revenues year-to-date are at 206.1 million, which is 64% of the $319.8 million budget. Most revenue categories are below the 75% target for the third quarter, and that's because monthly collection rates for our sales tax and property taxes, which are our largest sources of revenues, are often delayed as we're getting those receipts from the county. The year-end projection for the year is 332.5 million, which is 12.7 million or 4% over the budget. The largest variances within that number is investment proceeds, which we're expecting to be $5.3 million over budget. Property taxes, 2 million, and revenue from other agencies, $2 million over budget. And again, I wanna reiterate, the reason that these numbers are below the 75% target rate is because we often have a bit of a delay in the receipts from our sales taxes. So, you will see these numbers closer to our 100% target when we bring the fourth quarter to council in January. General fund expenditures for the fiscal year 24, 25, as of the third quarter, March 31st, year-to-date, 223.5 million, which is 50% of the $390 million budget. We're projecting to end the year at 379.6 million, which is $11 million or 2.8% under budget. The departments that are contributing to that variance are the Fire Department, HR, Public Works, Economic Development, and Program Support. And all of this is outlined in Attachment B of the staff report. And then, again, you'll see some variances here with Economic Development and Program Support. Again, our target is 75%. The reason for that is, the way the financial system operates is, entries are made for those specific categories that aren't showing a rate closer to 75% is because entries are made at the end of the fiscal year. So, when we bring the fourth quarter update, those numbers should all be a lot closer to our target of 100%. There are several, there are two technical adjustments that I'm asking council, that we're asking council to authorize, which are budget amendments for the Downtown Marina Fund and the Boat Launch Fund. These are not general fund items. And then, the recommendation for the council is to accept the third quarter budget status updates. And then, we're also asking to authorize the continuation of up to $12,233,179 in fiscal year 24, 25 budget appropriations for the completion of identified programs that are in your staff report. And the reason we do that is pursuant to Section 1908 of the city charter, which states that operating budget appropriations that lapse at the end of each fiscal year, if not expended or encumbered, are carried over. So, with this requirement in place, we're asking council to continue the appropriation for these important projects that are all outlined within the staff report. So, the city and our departments can complete those projects in fiscal year 25, 26. And that is it. I will open it up for questions, if council has any.
Yes, I do. So, I am trying, we're not at year-end yet. We're gonna get there sooner rather than later, but sometime in 2026, we'll be able to close out the books on the 24, 25 budget.
Correct.
Now, you're asking tonight that we take $12,233,179 and put that in the 25, 26 budget. But if we were not to do it, I'm not saying we're not, but I'm just saying, the 12.7 million plus the 11 million has us at basically, according to this, about 23.7 million overall, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and I bring that up because we're going to have carryover because we're carrying over right now. Now, the 2526, we know we have projects, we know we have things we have to pay for. Uh, I bring this up because I think we all received an email pointing out about these money, these dollars, uh, and what they can go to. And, uh, they're not going into known contingency, they're just going into the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct. These are monies that are gonna go towards existing projects that were either started or encumbered, either at the end of fiscal year 24 and 25 that couldn't get completed. And we're gonna carry forward the funds to finish them in 2526.
So that being said, is that at all gonna then come back before us? Or is this like, oh, we paused this, now we're just, we've got the money so we can pay for it? Or will it come back before us? I didn't stump you, did I? I'm the city manager, I don't, oh, Mr. Reed.
So these these projects have already been identified and the funds have been spoken for. This money will not come back before you. It's already been obligated. Now, this is allowing us to cross over the fiscal year so that the departments complete the projects.
Okay, but we had a balanced budget that we voted on.
Correct.
And, uh, what if we didn't have this 12.233179 to carry over?
Th- this money isn't carryover in the sense of unspent revenue. This money is carryover in the sense of these funds were identified for projects and we're asking council's authority to carry it over to the next fiscal year or carry it into the fix fiscal year. You've already approved these projects.
I I'm not denying that we haven't approved the projects, but where it's going, because we had a conversation about our pools, you know, and the needs for our pools. And so those are things that jump out in my mind, especially when we talk about things for our youth and making sure that our pools are open for our children during the summer. So that's where, that's my sticking point where I'm at, where where we've talked about, you know, the teen center. We've talked about a lot of things here that a lot of the needs in our community, um, and making sure that that there's a place for some of these, but we also have other things that we have to pay for that we've talked about, uh, quite extensively. And I just, I'm looking for the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, so to speak, and making sure that we can pay for all the promises that we've made. You know, promises made, promises kept. We've made, we've made obligations, uh, and making sure, because right now it still looks like there will be carryover funds at the end of the fiscal year, I mean, the closed end of year books.
They they were trending that way, correct?
Yes, but the 2526 budget doesn't look so rosy.
We haven't looked at the 2526 budget close enough yet to be able to make that statement. However, we are very aware that our expenses have increased in 2526, and so we are probably gonna finish up much tighter than we are in 2425.
And I apologize for my my questions.
No.
Is, uh, it's very important to know where we're at budget-wise. Um, I I know the audit committee has been working hard, you know, trying to figure out what our numbers are. We approved, you know, with Hall or somebody like that, name like that, you know, to continue looking into, well, for the audit committee and working with our ASD and HR and all that. But we want to know these numbers, and I'm looking forward to closing the books on the 2425 year.
Absolutely, and we will do that in January.
Okay.
And Mayor, just a a brief comment, uh, we also have a couple aces in the back of our pockets. For instance, um, hot iron freeze if necessary, so, uh, we well aware and we want to make sure that as we get down to the end of the budget, we'll be in a good position.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but knowing that, you know, some of this, it's attributed to vacancy savings, and we're hoping to fill some of those vacant positions that we've had for far too long, uh, and those are big ticket items, those are not, uh, little, you know, $15 an hour, uh, jobs. So, um, just making sure that we are financially set to finish out the 2526 year, which is the next one that we're in right now, and moving forward to the 2627 year, because that long-range financial plan is burned into my brain and it continues to push out, which I'm happy about. Push it out, push it out, push it out.
Yep.
Um, uh, but, you know, the public has expectations of where their tax dollars are going, and it's been talked about quite a bit tonight. So we need to make sure that we have money to do the things that that the people want, uh, in this city. So, um, uh, if there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counsel, please vote. Motion carries seven zero, find more money. Okay, moving on to item 16.2. This is another, uh, important item, Silver Lake Family Camp Discussion and Next Steps. Hello.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, Thomas Freeman, Program Manager with Community Services Department. Um, I'm here to give an update on the Silver Lake campground, um, the updates on the RFI, and then seek future future recommendations and direction. So just to recap what we talked about in the November 4th council meeting, um, we, the Silver Lake Family Camp is a camp up in the Eldorado National Forest. It's currently owned by the U.S. Forestry Service, um, and this camp is operated by the City of Stockton through a special use permit. The camp has been since closed since 2022. A facility assessment was done around that time and found that the camp needed a lot of necessary improvements. We presented three different options for those improvements. Uh, roughly $5.8 million would be for capital renewal costs. This would do for repairs, um, that include electrical, septic, and ADA improvements. Another option would be to completely renew all the buildings, completely new buildings at all, and that roughly about $22 million. We also discussed options that would could go remove the buildings altogether and Public Works estimated around $2 million. Uh, these numbers were estimated back in 2024, uh, so they are obviously much bigger than than that they are now. On that meeting, we gave you the three different options and and the budgets that went along with that. You also directed us to then solicit operator interest to see if anybody was interested in the community to operate in the facility. So staff went out and did a request for information. We ran that request from November 13th through December 4th. It was just a request for information, uh, so from the submissions that we get, we can't actually go into contract or or award that to anybody. It was just to see general interest in in the community. Uh, we encouraged concepts such as family youth camp camping, outdoor education, leadership programs, uh, nature nature-based programs. We had one respondent, um, is from a community, from a community leader up up in that area, the Onetto Tree Service. Um, they have previous experience with the U.S. Forestry Service in that area. Um, they have had special use permits previously. Um, they envision a family and public camp. Um, they've also acknowledged the programs as is. Their tree service currently services a lot of the trees in that area for the forestry service. So, so next steps and options, um, as we sort of talked about, there was one option number one, which is to renew renew the facilities. That price tag is 5.8 plus million dollars in 2024. The other options would be to replace all the buildings, um, that would cost over $22 million. The other option would be to rem- remove our special use permit and give the land back to the forestry service. If with that option, we have two additional options. One, we can take the information that we got from the RFI, and we can solicit a formal RFP, of which we would work with the forestry service to, uh, list our assets, um, and all the stipulations with that to then potentially give it to a new operator that would then work with the forestry service to renew their special use permit. Or under that option, we could remove the facilities and bring the land back to its original form. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't see any questions, but, um, on the RFI, what was the, um, you know, response for that?
So we had the one response. Um, we've had a few call-in, but only one formal formal response. It was from the Onetto Tree Service, um, it's from that group that's 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 up there. They they're very familiar with the forestry service. They have plans to turn it into a public family camp.
Okay, I bring that up because I've had a number of individuals, uh, reach out to me and talk to me about about the potential, um, people who, uh, used to go to that, um, camp as a kid and have, you know, visions of grandeur, bringing it back. So if we put out a RFP, I'd like to see an RFP go out, just let me know so that I can reach out to those people and say, put in your your proposal. So, and when do you think that might happen?
If we were to take that route, we would then, um, engage with the forestry service to make sure they had specific stipulations on there. The groups?
You scared him, poor Thomas.
No, Thomas is doing great. I I think the direction that we're looking for from council is if an RFP is requested, to please direct staff to put out that RFP so that we can continue the process.
I I just would like to see what people in the community and maybe outside the community, because I know I've mentioned two, I've mentioned, uh, the County Office of Education, having this as a secondary, you know, science campsite, maybe, so kids can get out of Stockton and go up into, you know, nature and the clean air and the lake and the, uh, forest and see its beauty, but, um, but that's just my my feeling. I don't know about the rest of council. Otherwise, I will, I will, um, because I'm gonna give you direction then, I will go ahead. Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, when I was in Children's Home of Stockton, this was actually one of the places where we would go as a kid. Um, and I know we've had conversations on two-by-twos with staff about how special this place is. I think one of the things that made it complicated, well, two of the things that made it complicated to really envision what can be done here is, one, um, my understanding is with the significant amount of capital renewal, uh, and, uh, that was gonna be required in order to rehab this place, that was gonna be one challenge. The second challenge is that, uh, I believe in the meeting we had was that there was only really six weeks of usage that could be used because of weather. Um, and I think as we were having conversations, I mean, if it was something that we could rehab, build, you know, for maybe six, eight months and be able to license service to other city-states, uh, programming for kids, I think would make sense. I just don't know. I mean, well, I do know, we financially don't have the money to do anything with it, too. I don't know if we are in any pursuit of grants to rehab or to pursue this. And there are lots of priorities right now that we as a council have to pursue in order to, you know, increase our tax base, tax sharing agreement, all those things. Um, as much as I want to hold on to this thing, it almost makes sense that we that we go with option three, right? And that we see, you know, if, you know, what we can do to remove it, or if we were going to see if there were other people that wanted to take it or take it on that may find use in it and may have access to resources. Um, I don't want to say, you know, I don't know where Paul, uh, Paul Canapa, Camp Canapa is right now with the whole, um, homeless, uh, golf course thing, if they're returning that, maybe this could be that. I don't know, I'm not saying shit people anywhere. I'm just saying that we can't do anything with this, and it didn't seem that if we were to do anything with it, we would have enough time for it to fiscally make sense. So I don't know what I just said in terms of a recommendation, I just know that we should not be pursuing doing anything with this building because we just don't have the means.
Because if we have to turn it over, we still have to put money into it in excess of a million dollars.
Then I reset that.
Was it 2.1 million or something like that? I don't, I.
The estimate, uh, the estimate back in '24, early '24, was about $2 million, so that's gone up, you know?
So we we'd have to pay that regardless if we turn it back.
Okay, then I reset that option, then whatever option to see who else can do something with it.
Yes, thank you.
And and it's also important to to note that we have a specific use agreement, and so partnering, you know, probably not necessarily an option, turning it over to a new operator would be the option.
Yes, uh, I I am in support of that. Uh, I will make that my motion then, if that's okay.
Blower, go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, counsel, please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much, Thomas. Don't scare him so much, Mr. Reed. Okay, okay, moving on then to, um, I think it is the city manager's report and this update, and this is your very first one.
Yes, it is. And just a point of privilege, I would like to just take one minute. You got it.
You can have three, like the public.
Won't take that one. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and to the residents of Stockton. I would like to take this opportunity to briefly introduce myself to the city residents. My name is Johnny Ford, and I'm truly grateful to be back serving the city of Stockton. This city is home for me. I've lived here for close to 25 years. And even when my career took me outside of city hall for a time, I never left Stockton. My wife and I live here. We love this city, and it means a great deal to be back doing this work. I previously served as Parks and Recreation Director, Deputy City Manager, and coming back feels more personal. I drive these streets every day. I see the concerns resident raise. I experience many of those same challenges. And I also see the pride and the potential that exists in every neighborhood. That's why I came back. I believe in Stockton. I believe in this city council. Together with our community, we can continue to move the city forward by staying focused on the work and the people we serve. I'm committed to working with each and every last one of you, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve. So I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to, uh, council comments. Um, I have, uh, Councilmember Villa Pudua.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to start, City Manager Johnny Ford, sir, um, I'm looking forward to working with you, and we already started that. I got to know each other just the other day, and things I'm gonna work on, and already in the short term, in the short term, you've helped me already in my community. I'm always always working with any city manager, so, um, the idea is that you already brought it up, the recommendations that you're doing, so, um, it's A-plus on my on my record, so I'm I just thank you for the short time you've been and, you know, even taking care of the situation that's been coming right in front, so appreciate you, sir. Um, so I want to thank also, um, Sheriff's Department, our Chief of Police, the DA, and everyone, um, that's working countless hours every day, so I appreciate you guys. Uh, this past weekend, I, uh, I attended, City Manager, I don't know if you guys know, Ms. Neighbors, um, we had her funeral, and this was a wonderful lady. That was the City Council for District Six. She did a lot of many things. She had many hats that she served in many committees, and she was the first black woman elected in District Six. And I remember, uh, walking to her house when I was running, and I just felt like giving her endorsement was like bigger than, uh, than the president because she had that arrow about her. So, um, just want to say to, uh, you know, if she's gonna be Miss, she's done a lot of things in the community, uh, and she's one of a kind. It's been a lot of great wins tonight. Uh, you know, we may not agree on everything, but there it is, we we move on. Uh, I want to thank all my constituents. Uh, I want to thank my, um, for what they're doing from now, helping out their community and their districts, uh, toy runs, and the turkey, um, events, uh, we've all been doing our due diligence. So I want to do kudos to all my, um, council members and the mayor as well. So, um, and as for the young crowd that came earlier, talk about the young man, Rocco Robinson, um, you know, hopefully we can find some answers for that family that are much needed. So, uh, chief, if you're hearing this, um, hopefully we can reach out to them and and see how we can help that family out. So Chief, if you're hearing this, hopefully we can reach out to them and, and see how we can help that family out. I know I'm missing a lot of things, but it was a great, great event this past weekend as well, the tree lighting with my council members being there and seeing the kids and seeing the cocos, seeing the boats with the lights. It was a great turnout. I think it was one of our biggest turnout, and it happens every year. And, and I think that we all came together and it was great to see the kids. Some people might take it wrong, but a lot of people did, and they, and the community did show up. And I'm just going to close as for what we had the other day with the victims. I constantly, there's not a word that we can do or can say that could bring it back, you know? They lost a son, they, they lost a daughter. I mean, I could just, it's unacceptable. I have a kid, and I, I hold him tighter than I do now, because it can happen to anyone. So I believe in justice. I, I know that our Sheriff's Department, all, all the agencies are working together. Just be patient, it's going to happen. You know, and I know my colleagues are helping as well too. So I just want to say prayers to the family, what they're going through. I know it's hard, but I just ask for prayers, not just for them, but just for violence, period. You know, and everyone else that has lost someone. So just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. As we close this meeting tonight, the first one since the tragedy that happened this weekend, I just want to speak on what we heard this evening, you know, to the families. I can't even imagine their feelings, their thoughts, their pain. But I want them to know that the city of Stockton is here for them. And our law enforcement agencies, Sheriff Department, Police Department, they are working diligently to bring the evil individuals to justice. And for the community members that spoke tonight, thank you for coming. And we hear you, we hear your grief, and we hear your calls for action. So they deeply matter. I just want everybody to know that. And to my colleagues, I know we all share the deep desire to keep youth here safe in Stockton. We want Stockton where our families can have a great quality of life, to where they feel that they are supported and that they have opportunities. That commitment, I truly believe, is coming from this entire council. You know, we've demonstrated that through making budget decisions, through program investments, just our ongoing work throughout the community. Everybody here on this dais has the passion and the desire to make this city better. But I just want to be clear about something, you know? In a moment of tragedy, there really is no place for blame or narratives suggesting that this council has ever turned their back on youth. You know, there were recent public statements implying that this council turned down prevention service, we refused funding, and that is just simply misleading. You know, the loss of children to violence will not be used to create a false narrative. Not in a press conference, not on television, not on social media, and not in this chamber. Our community deserves honesty, accountability, and real solutions. Nothing less. And any commitment to our youth and our families will never stop. To our residents, please don't let this tragedy take away your joy over this holiday season. Do not let this act of violence steal your independence, your traditions, or your peace. You know, we're, we all can be cautious. We all can use good, common, safety sense. But don't stop living. Don't stop gathering. And we need to continue to support our local businesses. You know, our faith teaches us that light shines bright in darkness. And Stockton, Stockton, I truly believe with all my heart that we will rise in unite, in unity, in compassion, as well as in courage. So with that, God bless you, and God bless the city of Stockton.
Thank you. Councilmember Blower.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start my, my comments by just giving a hearty welcome to Johnny Ford. Welcome aboard. I, I've known Johnny for a long time. I first met you in Rotary. And so it's, it's nice to see you here, and I, I just look forward to your leadership. I look forward to, hopefully, I, I think you're a guy who can maybe bring people together. And that's something that I, I truly, truly hope, that's my prayer, is that this council can somehow get along better than we have in the past. It's been a strange year. It's been a tumultuous year. And, and I'm just hoping that, that 2026, under your leadership, will be a much more peaceful year, will be more cohesive, and will focus on the work and not the infighting. So I, I charge you with that, Johnny, no pressure, but I, I do look forward to working with you. Let's see, what else did I want to bring up? Just a quick reminder to my colleagues, the Emergency Food Bank will be doing their annual Christmas food box giveaway, and that will be on the 23rd on Tuesday. They are booked up. There are, I do have a couple of spots. And I'd be more than happy to do like we did last time where if, if some of you, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Enriquez, if you would like to.
And I owe him a steering wheel warmer. From the event.
But if you're, if you're interested in doing that again, you know, please just let me know after the meeting, and I'll be happy to get you in there. And then I just have to end my, my comments, just addressing the tragedy as a father. It's, it's just unimaginable to me, the thought of losing one of my daughters. And to, my heart just breaks and goes out to the people that, that lost their children, to the families, the people involved. This is, is going to be something felt for, for years and years to come by them, and I don't think will ever go away. And, and I just, I feel for them, and I just hope that we can look to solutions and, and justice. So I, I guess I would like to throw it out there to the public, there are people out there that know things, people out there that have information, and I would just appeal to those people to come forward. There's, you know, the, the rewards have gone up and, and, you know, that's an incentive. But boy, just, just do it because it's the right thing to do. So I, that's my final appeal, and I'll just keep my, keep my comments to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Enriquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to first, before I get to all my other things, I just want to again recap the last week. You know, one of the things I've been learning a lot from, from this community and our city has been, my focus has been to just really listen. And I think that's something where there's a lot, when there's a lot of noise online, your friends, your neighbors, you get phone calls, despite what position you have, you get phone calls left and right because people want to know what's going on. And I want to thank our, our sheriff for leading the investigation and his leadership, as well as every other law enforcement officer that has been on this. And I know it's, there's a lot going on, but we have to continue to trust that, that they are doing their best they can to, to provide us answers about what happened. But going back to listening, you know, I've been to, you know, not just vigils, but listening sessions, just being invited to just sit and sit in the back and just process and just hear what people are, are saying, you know? Process, listening to grief, listening to frustrations, to leadership, listening to ideas, solutions, things that have worked in the past. And that takes a lot when you can just go to a room and just sit in the back and just listen, and sometimes take in heat when it's about maybe yourself or, or your collective group in terms of colleagues. But one of the things I've, I've been hearing a lot, and I want to thank the community advocates, they know who they are, where we've had numerous downtown listening sessions with not just youth, but youth organizers, people that are doing youth engagement work in all throughout the city of Stockton. And, and I've just been really taking a lot in and just processing what that means. So, you know, as we move forward into the new year, and I, and I work with my colleagues, and I said this to both my colleagues on the Ledge Committee the other days, you know, really thinking what 2026 is going to look like for each and every one of us, but also collectively, and what does that look like? What's it going to mean when I turn on my microphone, you know, maybe think, am I going to say this? Is it appropriate? Is it the right time? Is it something that's bringing people together? Is it building consensus? And if it's not, then let's take the lesson of this past year and really reflect on, maybe, you know what, maybe I'm not going to say it. Or what can I learn to improve about how I'm going to speak? And what I'm going to say? Because at the end of the day, as much as we all say, you know, everyone's a little bit different. We, you know, I, I really focus on when I leave this dais, I don't, I leave it here, you know? Councilwoman Padilla and I can have a good, healthy debate on the dais, and then we can go and have dinner afterwards and laugh with any of my colleagues. But that's really the, the culture we have to really create and mean it. When we had the vigil, when we all came together, I appreciated that all of us came together. And, you know, I really, really want all of us, as we go home and throughout this remainder of the year, and I'm really big about December, it's really a processing month for me in general, because I'm always used to it's school, right? It's winter break, things are slower, families are probably at home more, and you're thinking about what you've done in the year. You think about your goals for 2026. So I've been really intentional with just thinking, listening, writing. There's a few more sessions that I'm going to, both at Delta and at Pacific and with other youth nonprofit groups. And, you know, I'm not here to say I have answers, but as, as a legislator and as a policymaker and being on Ledge and with all of us, as we vote on things, I've been really thinking about what, what ideas can we really come up with? But it's you all that have the ideas. It's you all that also have great insights. So I think listening is more important now than ever, and really stay focused on, on accurate news. People go down rabbit holes on Facebook, Facebook groups, and, and we have to really find a way to stop going there. The true source is going to be the Sheriff's Department. And I, and I, and I press and I urge each and every one of you to listen to that as the main source of information as you get things. Because anyone else, any Facebook groups that post anything, please don't go down that rabbit hole. It's, it's damaging our community more than you know. And it, it's a ripple effect of toxicity and just the, the never-ending culture that so many of us get stuck into here in Stockton. And we have to really think and get out of that hole together. And it's going to take a long time. You know, even though this council has been in it for a year, we're not going to say we're going to solve gun violence prevention tomorrow. We know this is systemic. We know this has been going on for decades. But now, it's unfortunate that now it's a reaction. Now, all of a sudden, it seems to the public that we're scrambling. Whether it's true or not, I'm not saying that. But to some, that's what it looks like. My, my ask to all of you is to say, bring us in, invite us in, let's listen together, let's think of the ideas. If it's ceasefire, Operation Ceasefire, if it's advanced peace, if it's revisiting office of violence prevention. I know a lot of, my colleagues know a lot with OVP, and I know our city manager. But if the next step means to look more into OVP and other strategies that have worked, then, you know, let's put our egos to the side and just be open to hearing and listening. And I think that's, for me, has been my, my biggest takeaway in the last 10, 12 days of, of sitting down with community leaders and our young people. Some of the other things too is that I, I've been really wanting to, to again, challenge my colleagues. And if this makes sense, I know in the beginning of the year when we started, we had a brainstorming session in terms of our vision. And, and even now, I, I get stuck in this point of, I don't think we still have a vision. And there's, there's been so much infighting that I think we've just been distracted from what the goal is. What do we all collectively want as a group? And I, and I am hopeful for 2026 because now we have more stability. We have a city manager. We're going to have someone that's going to be leading our, our finance department. We're going to have other position, critical positions that are now going to be filled. So to see what that looks like and to really have an opportunity for all of us, whether it's having a special closed meeting and process what's happened. We haven't even done that. Let's have a closed session meeting to say, let's process what happened, because the time we really came together was at the vigil. And, and I appreciate the unity, I felt it. You know, we, we left whatever people were feeling, and we were just there to be with our community. And that meant a lot to not just me being with my colleagues, but I'm sure we all felt it when we were in the community. But it's going to take a lot, as I think of, of this month, I know we, we have one more meeting coming up on, next Tuesday, the 16th. But I really want to find ways, and I'm going to work with the city manager to see if there's something we can do in terms of our vision setting for early next year. Think about our different committees. Let's see, you know, if you're, if you chair a committee, and if you, even if you don't chair a committee, what can you do in your committee to bring something forward? What can you do to amend a policy, introduce something new? And I challenge that to all, all six of you, along with myself, of what are you going to be able to introduce this upcoming year? And that's a challenge and a call to action to all of you, because we all have the ability to introduce something and see and, and pass it. We don't have to rely on just a chair or the mayor. All of us have an opportunity to introduce something. Going to, just into the, just the engagement, and as I, as I mentioned about listening to, to our people. At Ledge Committee this past Monday, I shared earlier that, you know, sometimes policies aren't overnight. It takes a lot of time to really craft something that works for the community and works for Stockton. And two things that I've been really, have been working on, one for nine months and one for five months, has been our street vendor ordinance and our compassionate city resolution regarding immigration. And again, that takes time. But I want you all to know that I can think of two other pieces of legislation that has been this embedded and involved with community, town halls, Zoom sessions, sitting down with staff in the round room, going through the legislation text, going through the editing, making revisions, building compromises, working with others to really understand what that means for them. And, you know, and I, and I highlight that because this truly was an opportunity for people to be part of the process, to see what legislation text looks like, to provide their ideas and their opinions and their concerns. And, and I say all that because next Tuesday, we'll be voting on those two items. But before that, there's a lot of engagement happening in my district, and, and it's open to the community. I know I've already shared on Instagram, and I invite my colleagues, if they're able to make it, anyone from staff, city manager, if they're able to, to learn more about this and, and these important initiatives. But tomorrow, I have two back-to-back events. I have my street vendor town hall, part two, the first one we had in May. Also, it will be at Oak Park Senior Center, December 10th, tomorrow, 5 o'clock to 6:30. And then following after that, I have my 7:00 PM Zoom session, Immigration Town Hall, part two, to discuss the overview of what the compassionate city resolution is. That way, as we all prepare to know what it is, then you all, despite however you feel about it, can come and give public comment next Tuesday, the 16th, regarding that resolution. And also an opportunity for my colleagues, when the agenda is posted, to see what it looks like. That way, they can get educated on what this resolution entails. But that will be tomorrow night via Zoom at 7:00 PM. And then this weekend, as always, I have my mornings with Mario, always an opportunity to just, again, share your ideas, your frustration, your concerns, you name it. If you want to come and, and yell at me about something, please do. I, I take every conversation at those coffee meetings very seriously, and I always carry my notebook with me to take notes. So that way I can follow up as I meet with the city manager weekly, so that way I can follow up and give you answers.
So when can I come yell at you?
You can yell at me this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Ground Stack Coffee down Pacific Avenue. And then this Monday, we, I want to thank our staff, again, with everything, but this one in particular, I've been getting a lot of emails throughout the year. Folks have been really interested to learn about Oxford Circle, which is near Pacific and somewhere between Pacific and Miracle Mile. There's been this big debate about, you know, it's a historic part of our town. And there's been a debate about asphalt versus concrete. You know, everything costs money. We don't have all the money in the world. So again, as we think strategically with our, our programs and our infrastructure and just everything that's important for this community. I need my five seconds back. No kidding. But, but this has been a debate in that area and it's not really going to be a debate. I want to just give any misinformation that went out there. We are not here to get rid of the roundabout on Oxford Circle. It's really to, to let people know the status of Oxford Circle, the realities of our infrastructure, what we can and cannot afford. And I think a lot of folks don't understand where we're at with that. So I want to just provide an opportunity for folks to just learn more from our staff. It'll be this Monday, the 15th at 6:00 PM at the First Unitarian Church on Pacific Avenue, right as you enter the Miracle Mile. And again, I, I posted that online and I'll be sure to, to let my, my colleagues know as well if they haven't seen it already. And then just really quickly with infrastructure, some of my constituents were happy, again, small wins. But again, for them, it could be the biggest thing that, that made their day and it made their week. So I want to acknowledge every win, big and small. A lady was very happy that on Vine Street, we got some potholes that were fixed on, as well as another nice lady on 1200 Block of Country Club Boulevard, on the intersection of Pershing Avenue, we fixed two potholes. And then thanks to our graffiti team for fixing graffiti alongside Oak Park, right across the street on 902 East Alpine Avenue. Also, we have two ADA ramps that were just installed this morning on the corner of Dave Brubeck Way by UOP and Pacific Avenue. And then of course, tonight, I'm happy that we did a 7-0 on consent agenda regarding, a big win for us. So go council. But for District Four, I know the mayor mentioned this during her, her mayor review for the agenda tonight, was that we were able to approve a left turn signal at the corner of Harding and Pacific as you enter the Miracle Mile. As we know, there have been accidents there and as you turn in, now we'll be able to, to get that updated and then it'll be ready to go next year. And I'll be sure to let my constituents know regarding that. And then also during our recess, I have to follow up with council member Villa Pudua. But one of the things him and I have been talking a lot about with some of constituents have been regarding the smoke shop on Wilson Way in Harding. This Friday, and I was going to tell you afterwards, but just so the public knows, we're going to be looking to do a site visit or walk alongside this Friday at 10:00 AM. This is a time provided by Supervisor Canapa as well as SUSD, as well as SUSD trustee Colon. So if the councilman is able to join us, that'd be great. That way we can all walk through that. As we know, there's been numerous concerns. And then we were also able to get a, what do you call it? A, spot truck there after two years of advocacy from one of our joint constituents and our city manager. So thank you for that. And that is an area of, of deep concern for our constituents, whether it's our unhoused, prostitution, drugs, you name it. But we get all the calls left and right, but we want to be able to, to know that we do take this seriously as every smoke shop throughout the city of Stockton. I know we've done some legislation this past year. We have the moratorium. But I know the next steps would be to hear what more would be, what was, what's going to follow next? There are citations that have been issued, but for folks that don't know, we just can't close a smoke shop overnight. There's a process, so we please ask for your patience. But know that all my colleagues up here are very aware of the issues of smoke shop, smoke shops. And we are working with our staff. That way we can address it and, and, and we do take it seriously. And then going back to what I said earlier about our ledge committee meeting, we had a really productive year. We, we got a majority of our, of our policies that we introduced passed to the full council, which is a big win for a ledge committee. We're very active. So again, I want to thank Councilwoman Padilla and Vice Mayor Lee for their leadership and just the, the ideas we can brainstorm and bounce off each other and that committee as well as, Councilmember Blower, who's able to join in on some as well. But we also talked about how this upcoming year, we want to think of more even further about what new ideas we can introduce to, to the council and to the ledge committee and just really think about issue areas that you really care about. And with all that, again, I look forward to next Tuesday, council meeting. Again, two big items that I, that I've been working on with my community for the last five, nine months. And again, wish you all a good night and thank you again.
Good job. Councilwoman Padilla, I mean, excuse me, Fonse.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to also welcome our new city manager, Mr. Ford, Johnny Ford. I look forward to working with you and I welcome you. I extend my heartfelt prayer for the unity and collaboration as necessary to address the pressing issues that have plagued our community. God knows how much I prayed for this council to work together and put an end to all the drama. It is imperative that we maintain focus and continue working diligently to fulfill the promises we made to our constituents. Violence in this city needs to stop. No child's life should be taken away from gun violence. Kids in this world should be taken care of and loved deeply. The four young kids that, the four young kids' lives that were taken during the tragic mass shooting is pure evil. My deepest condolences to the victims' families. No family, no mother should endure such an unimaginable suffering and loss. My heart is with the families who lost a loved one, those who were injured and everyone affected by this act of gun violence. I also want to thank the Sheriff Department and all the law enforcement agencies are coming together to help solve the case and bring the perpetrators to justice. The pursuit of justice must be served for the innocent children who lost their lives. I am confident that soon justice will be made, but we need the community's help. If you know anything, please say something. Your collective support is crucial. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take my time with tonight because I do have a lot to say. The first thing I want to say is to City Manager Ford, I have enjoyed every single conversation we've had. I love the fact that you are continuing your journey with the city, your dedication, your understanding, but more importantly, your wisdom. As somebody who is, I guess I'm a junior, no, I'm a freshman, you know, councilperson, to be able to, am I a junior? I mean, I'm 48, so I'm somewhere in there.
Many years behind.
But I do appreciate the conversations, have so much wisdom and your journey through the city and your own personal experiences in mine. I appreciate the council and I do, I listen more than I speak when it comes to you. And I do appreciate all of the support you've given me with staff in my district coming in. And I echo some of the comments of my colleagues that, you know, hopefully you are the bridge. I am one that leads and lives with optimism. I have a very blessed life. I've worked through a lot of my own personal trauma. Those that know my story, I don't need to talk about that, but I do share my story because there are a lot of people in this community who are trying to figure out how to continue their story in the way that I've been able to do mine. When I think about the work that I've done here over the last year, I too am very frustrated with how we got to where we are. There's been little jabs taken during council comments. I'm not even going to give those folks a response. Because this tragedy that we've all witnessed has done something more than just make me reflect on my own past. It's made me realize that at this point, I have to rise above the drama. Like no matter what investigations or whatever digs or whatever makes people feel comfortable, I'm going to let them be able to live in that and that be the reflection of their leadership. I am better than that and I have allowed myself to fall into the trap of fighting to protect the integrity of this council by trying to work with people and try. You know, me and Councilwoman Padilla have lots of conversations privately that don't reflect the public conversation that I heard tonight. And that's okay, because what I know for sure is God always shows me who people are and you have to believe who they are the first time. Let me first start by saying that I got a warning tonight about rules. I do think that it's in the best interest of this council to go through a Rosenberg's Rules of Training together. I don't think we can do it in private, but if we can do that, I think we have to direct staff with four of us. So I'd like to make the motion if I can to be able to see if we can get a Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Because it is tough to run these meetings and the mayor's doing her job and, you know, I, I don't want a disruptive meeting because getting out of here before 10 o'clock, I don't think any of us saw that coming and we all want to get home and eat. So I'll make the motion or do I make the motion or can four of us give staff direction to do that?
You don't need a formal motion, but you do need direction and approval from at least four council members.
So is everybody on council comfortable with that? Can you all say yes?
Maybe we get out of here by 7:30. Who knows? We'll see. Okay. Thank you, council for that. And I want to thank Mafe Belasco from the Filipino American Heritage Society, Stockton Chapter for allowing me to speak at their event. And for Councilman Rodriguez and I to both present, we presented a lot of awards. We were up there a long time and I didn't get any pictures sent to me. But it was such an amazing event to be able to share the space with a, a community that has long history here in the city of Stockton. There was a comment earlier about representing all of South Stockton. Look, we as council members represent the entire city. We all govern the entire city. But I was elected by District Six. That is my district. That is where I am going to ensure that my, there's a renewed focus on my district because I do have a lot of work and my district has a lot of needs. And I am not responsible for what other council people do. Even if you have a neighboring district, if your, if my neighboring district is not clean or has issues, that is responsible of that council member and every council member up here has their own area. So when I say South Stockton, Western Ranch, everybody knows the district lines, that is what it is. And unfortunately, while I have offered support to all my colleagues, I do need to focus on my district. Yesterday I had a meeting with California State Treasurer Fiona Mann, her team and SUSD Leadership Superintendent Dr. Rodriguez and Salwan King County Office of Ed, Dr. Vicki Locke about programs to get youth financial resources from the state. They have a new program coming out called the Hope Program. I've asked for Stockton Unified School District in partnership with the state to be one of their first cities that can provide resources. There's a way of providing 1,500 and up to $3,000 of, of funding for foster children and kids who are in need. So I'm excited about that and I'll make sure to keep council and the community updated on that. Tomorrow I'll be attending and speaking at the Salwan King County Office of Education's Project Community Showcase. I believe Councilman Rodriguez is also going to be participating. And I'm really grateful to the young students who watch me on social media and ask that I come and speak to them because that is really why I ran. I asked my team to create a video of a compilation of all the advocacy that I've done for youth here just in the last three years. And I'll be sharing that across my social media tomorrow because it's not about opinions or thoughts or ideas. It's about the facts. And we can't erase history because the history is all there. I want to thank this council for voting for police substations because I got the date for December 23rd. And Sierra Vista is going to be the ribbon cutting for the first substation restorer in District Six. And I want to thank the city manager Chad Reed and all the staff, Chief McFadden and his staff, who are working to get the lease done in Western Ranch. So that way we can start to increase police presence. And I want to shout out Congressman Josh Harder. He and I had a call this week about continuum of funding for those substations and looking at how we can expand that throughout the city, but also real-time crime center. So we have a call coming up with city manager Congressman Harder, the chief, and I also invited the mayor to that because I know we all want to continue to go after all the resources we can to make this a safer community. Speaking of safe, we have Hollywood Cares has the annual Toys for Joy event, December 20th, at Aspire Secondary Elementary School in Sierra Vista from 12 to 4. There will be street closures. There will be double the amount of security, over 100 volunteers. Tiffany Haddish is returning as Ms. Claus. She will not be seated for photos. She's going to actually go outside and make sure she talks to everybody and goes throughout the whole place, but it's going to be really fun. You can reach out to me via email if you're in District Six and you want to get connected to the team and I'll make sure that you're there. And we've, we are going to welcome the families and their children of those that were recently in the shooting to come early and to be able to enjoy the space and get what they need prior to the rest of the folk coming up. And I think there is a fast track lane for all of you who sign up. I do want to announce that I did send a press release out recently that the state controllers office did inform me that they would be conducting a state audit to look at our internal controls. I mean, one of the things that I believe the mayor and I and other council members have shared is ensuring that we, you know, don't go down the lane of bankruptcy again and that we are ensuring that our fiscal management, our internal controls are intact. I have confidence in City Manager Ford, who's already hit the ground running to ensure that the appropriate staffing in those departments are put in place so that way we can stay on track. We want to build this city. We don't want to see it go down a slippery slope. In addition to that, I want to thank the Audit Committee, my colleagues who worked to finalize the DEI investigation, Councilwoman Padilla and Councilmember Blower. That investigation report will be submitted to the city clerk and then will be available and shared on the agenda for the next council meeting next week on the 16th. Speaking of council meetings, we have to make a request here in council to add agenda items. And so there are three items that I want to add to future agendas. One of them is I, I had a, I was, there was outreach from RTD about whatever is going on at RTD in relation to COG. I don't know that matter. I'm not on COG and I have, I have not received a report. I did email, I think the mayor asking questions about RTD. I, I saying, you know, should I talk to him, not talk to him? I don't know. But I did have a meeting with them. I did hear their presentation. I am interested in learning more. I'm not on COG, but I am on the council and RTD does provide a service to our community. And there is concerns around a legal matter that I don't understand, but I do want to understand if there's any impact. So I do want to ask RTD to do a presentation here at the council for the full council in the next 30 days. If I can get a second for that, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Restore the Delta, I received a call from Restore the Delta. Mormon slough is a topic of conversation. Everybody that knows District Six and District Five and District Five being a neighboring district to mine, there's a lot of activity going on there. There was a meeting about the Mormon slough that I was not able to participate in, but I am interested in that and working with my colleagues to address those issues. Restore the Delta has called me and has some presentations on the matter that they'd like to talk and share with the community. So I'd like to make a motion to invite Restore the Delta within the next 60 days to do a presentation. Thank you. And then lastly, I know we've invested resources in pursuing shipyard building. I share the same interest with the mayor to understand how we can elevate our tax base, create jobs for the community. And I don't believe councils received a presentation on shipyard building. If there is work being done still or the work that has been up until now, I think it would benefit us to share that with the community. So I'd like to add that to a future agenda within the next 60, 90 days. Thank you. All right. Now I do want to talk about the mass shooting and you can't really talk about it without looking at it. And I have other photos. I'm just going to put this one right here. And if you can put that one right there. Because these are not people that have been used for a political gang. I had to step out earlier because I got emotional when somebody was sharing their pain here. And I have to say that I've been personally triggered by this, not just because these are young kids, not because this little boy here looks like me and not because I've talked to these families more than I've talked to mine over the last 10 days. It's because of the work that we've done here. So when the councilwoman talked about press conferences where I stood in this room with the father and his mother today and comforted them and have been comforting them. I first want to say a lot of love and a lot of support to Chief Patrick Winthrop, who is an amazing leader in our public service, who met with the parents here yesterday and the city manager to talk about their case and, and what they're doing to pursue that. You know, when I said at the press conference today that there's blood on this council's hands, let me be very clear. In 2022, I sent an email to the city. I wasn't an elected official and I said, the blood is on your hands if we don't do something to save these kids. Then I ran for office and got elected. I had a six-year-old campaign manager because I wanted the world to see the face of who, what, who my compass was. And got elected. That five-year-old stood right here and asked for program services and it was shot down. March of 2025, here's a document titled Proposal for Strategic Partnership Between Advanced Peace and Stockton OVP. I helped to get this created. This city shut that down. I'm going to give this to the city clerk so she can make it available to the public. In the budget, I'm the one that asked if we'd give more funding to OVP. We had to have an extra budget day. They didn't get all the funding that we needed them to get. Face covering ban. Just read today that the people that shot these young kids had face coverings on. This council didn't approve that. I toured the jail and juvenile hall with my colleagues. So we understand the need for state laws to be changed in order to make this a safer community. And the Youth Impact Center proposal that I brought to council and recused myself was voted down by that group. So I don't want to sit here and talk about politics, but we can absolve ourselves of the history that is well documented. I asked the police department to provide me crime stats of homicides and fatal shootings, homicides and, and non-fatal shootings in our community since the first of the year to now by age and race. From zero to 19 years old. Here's the race. I'll just go down really quick. Hispanic, D, I don't know what that is. Filipino, black, black, Hispanic, Hispanic, black, 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 Hispanic, black, black, Hispanic, Hispanic, black, Hispanic, black, Hispanic, black, Hispanic, 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 black, Hispanic, 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 Hispanic. These are facts provided by the police department. I know it's hard to hear, but that is the facts. So I'm just going to say that while I am committed to continuing to work with my colleagues, I am optimistic that hopefully this be the thing that trigger us to put all the pettiness aside. I will not reach out again because I did reach out to the mayor when this happened and I have not received a call. And this, one of these girls goes to the school where we're having Toys for Joy. And this, one of these girls goes to the school where we're having Toys for Joy and the other one lives in my district. And I didn't tell the family that I couldn't get a return call because that's not of interest to them. What's of interest to them is that we provide support. So I want to thank Genevieve Valentine from Behavioral Services to providing all of the mental health services to the kids and the family. This young boy's sister was also shot in this incident. I want to thank, again, Patrick Winthor for taking every single call of me, coming down to meet with the families, District Attorney Ron Freitas for getting on the phone with me to talk about resources, Burner Boy Cash Jones, known as WAC one hundred, for providing financial support. And the other thing is the councilman talked about the Bible. The Bible says faith without work is dead. So we can have faith and we can talk and talk, but if we don't do the work and if we don't allow this manager and his staff to execute the work, more of your kids in this community will die and this council will be responsible for that. One of the quotes that my boss used to say is the hottest places in hell are reserved for those in times of moral crisis maintain their neutrality. There is no being in the middle anymore. We're either right or wrong. That's it, right or wrong. Councilwoman Ponce, every time I see you, I ask you how your son is doing. This mother can't ask her son that anymore. This is not a joke, this is real life. And the last thing is, while I'm focusing on counting to four, or while some people are focused on counting to four, I'm focusing on making every vote count. And before we get out of here, mayor, if we could do a moment of silence for these kids and those that were affected, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
That was on my list. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first things first, I don't know how to do this, but the DSA Downtown Stockton Alliance, I know that they need a forty-five day window in order to get that going, so I would like it to be on the next agenda. And with the removal of Section A and Section B from the map, but I will provide you with that and I understand the concern there, but if we don't at least notice it, we can't go anywhere with it.
So mayor, I do have an email that's coming out to the council, but I did want you to know that the board is meeting tomorrow to decide whether they want to do reconsideration or whether they want to restart the process. So we won't know what their decision is until then.
So if they say yes, you know, or no, then we know whether or not to put it on the agenda, okay?
Mayor, can we give authorization to put it on the agenda if they vote yes? Because I'll, I'll support that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, do you need anything else on that? That's okay?
Not for me, but I might want to ask the manager and his staff also.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you. I just want to talk about some of the things on the consent agenda because I really wanted to pull them, but I said, "No, I wasn't going to pull them," but twelve-twelve, West Coast Arborist, I just want to make sure it's pruning and it's not taking off every limb of the tree, but gentle pruning to extend the life of the tree, not kill it, and stump removal. If they're, if they are cutting down a tree, that truck cuts it down, another truck comes behind and takes out the stump right there. We have stumps that have been there for years and they just need to do it in one fell swoop. Item twelve point three, Cannery Park, I've had a number of people I've run into that said, "Where is the park in Cannery Park?" So the Carroll Naomi Trujillo Park was approved this evening and it'll have pickleball, which if you watched my, I just said Blower. It will have a half-court basketball, it'll have playgrounds, it'll have a picnic structure, picnic tables, lighting, pathways, turf. It's a little over two acres that will be parked in Cannery Park. Item twelve point four, the left turn pocket, so that's something that I brought up due to the number of accidents at Lincoln and Harding and the inability to turn onto Pacific unless you're willing to put your life in your own hands from Harding to Pacific. So I'm glad that that is coming to fruition. It is from Harrison all the way to Commerce, they're looking at that whole stretch there as to making, there's some traffic calming to help with flow and safety. So I'm happy that's finally here. The other item I wanted to break up, Jason Terramoto, you got all approved for him, he's a Cal grad to be my PIO, twenty years, he worked in DC, he's got a degree in political science as well as in journalism, so he's super excited, I think, about getting started. I said, "I wish you were here already" because the last week was, it was difficult. So I just want to clear up a few things, corrections, so I did not call for the National Guard, I did not call for ICE. A special advisor to the president reached out to me and, and wanted to give me, there is a twenty-four hour guide and then there is a playbook for mayors and city managers when there has been a mass shooting. I didn't know that anything like that existed, they went ahead and they sent it to me. Who I did reach out to was the Department of Justice and I reached out to them because guess what? We were with the Department of Justice in May. We went and we met with the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Violent Crime and Gang Section, that was one of the meetings that we had, that we were doing this in May, working on this in May. In July, we met again with the Department of Justice, the FBI, we met with the Department of Education and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So those are things that we've all talked about and I will say that chief came with his ask, he did this nice little brochure here, his needs assessment was a federal task force coordination, which I have brought up and I have stayed true to that with multi-agency task force. And it goes back to, because I printed all this stuff out, goes back to our Stockton Marshall Plan, which is the blueprint, literally the blueprint, and we've done a lot of things in here. And that was off the recommendations of Dr. Braga, who at the time was a criminologist out of Harvard, now he's at Penn State. And guess what? He just did another one for us and it's focused deterrence, strategic management and effective gun violence prevention. He did this with us in mind for that, so that report is out there. If anybody needs the, the context for that, I can get it for you. Technology and Real-Time Intelligence Tools, DOJ Technical Assessment and Strategic Roadmap, Officer Recruitment Training and Retention Resources, and then Pilot City Status, and that's for innovation tracks representing a model for other high-crime and mid-sized, for mid-sized cities, even though we're now the tenth largest in California. So I just wanted to point that out, those are the facts for that. We do, and I'm sorry that one of the people left already, we do evidence-based and data-driven programs. OVP is that, let me find that for you. We do have Operation Ceasefire, this is the latest report from them, and I will also let you know, here is some of the data. So total individuals thus far served in two thousand twenty-five is three hundred and eight, which you might say, "Oh, well, that's not very much." But guess what? Those were representing fifty-four different gangs, those three hundred and eight. And of those fifty-four, eighty-eight percent of those fifty-four represent the most active gangs in Stockton, they do call-ins, they, they are out on the streets, the peacekeepers were in the hospital before some of the family members were even there, they provided transportation, hotel, as well as food, you know, they were there, they listened, that was the main thing. And I think Vice Mayor mentioned that, just listening, just being there with them, because what can you really say? So we are doing these things, and I'll tell you the result of we, of us doing those things. And yes, one murder is way too much, but with the lean number of officers that we have, hence not being able to go to a sideshow because we only have so many, homicides are down twenty-six percent, injury shootings are down sixteen percent, we've removed seven hundred and fifty-nine guns from the street, and I'm not saying that was a gun buyback, that is not a gun buyback. Last year, we were at six hundred and twenty-three. So our police department, our peacekeepers, our OVP, our Operation Ceasefire, all those things are working together with our partners in the District Attorney's Office, in the FBI, in the ATF, all of that working together at the Sheriff's Department with the CHP. Speaking of the CHP, when I met with the Chief of Staff for the Governor and the senior staff, the senior cabinet, they talked about something called CST, and that is Crime Suppression Team. And it's through the CHP, believe it or not. And I said, "Well, how do we get, how do we get that?" So I know I'm skipping around and I'm skipping things. So I do want to say IYT, Improve Your Tomorrow, that is working with young men of color, specifically those that, that maybe don't know exactly what they want to do, maybe they're walking around, one of the young men said, "Hey Ricky," he said, "Man, I was just hanging out on campus, just walking around." And somebody from IYT came up and said, "Hey, I've got a program I want to share with you." He joined it, now he is a, he, he is a counselor for IYT, he graduated, he's, and, and they are pushing that. But guess what? We need to have more of that. The Table Community Foundation, they do after-school programs, we need to have more of that. PD has the Explorers Program, where there's young kids learning about law enforcement and they volunteer in the community. But there's still work to do. County, the Sheriff's Department, they are doing the investigation, I have full confidence in them, but people saw the word Stockton, Stockton, Stock. My email was so full of people requesting, requesting update, I would say, I don't, I don't have anything, but I do still stand behind what I said in terms of that this is, is, has gang ties to it. I still stand behind what I said that this is a community act of terrorism because people are scared, they are afraid, but it's not citywide, it was targeted, it was very targeted. As far as noise, I put out press releases, I asked for long-term investment in our youth. Governor's Office, again, has, has been supportive of that, had a meeting today with the Assembly Woman, the Senator, so Assemblywoman Ransom, Senator Jerry McNerney, the State Department of Justice Chief, the Assistant Attorney General, the District Attorney's Office, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, we all were talking about, I brought up pie, I call it pie, I want a piece of pie. Pie is policy, we need to work on our policy, we need to, I is for investment and E is for enforcement, because hey, the little things. If we would just get to people for the little things and work on them at that point before it blows up into something bigger that has, like that gentleman said, he did a crime and he killed somebody. But I think that we need to get to them earlier, we need to get to our youth earlier, we need to be able to show them another path, as I look over at the time. So I do want to talk about something positive, the, the Saturday night's tree lighting, those people that attended, they needed it. And I had person after person, I think came up to all of us thankful that they had something to smile about, that they had hope. Councilmember Enriquez started it off, got them all fired up, but the message from, from all of us was, was pretty consistent across the board that, you know, we want to have a safe city. And that night, if you were there, there was security everywhere there and there was a line down the street. And at the arena, there was a couple thousand people there, there was at least a thousand plus people at, at the tree lighting, so we had a lot of people downtown and being together, hey, like I've said before, if God wanted us to be alone, he would have stopped it at him. We need to be together, we need to work together, there's that unity in that. The other night, after, you know, a few days of this, you know, it was exhausting, Councilwoman Padilla and I went to the Unicorn Society's Dancing Through the Decades. And we're talking about, you know, they did the sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties, and, and this was an inclusive, an inclusive dance group. So what I mean by that is there were young people that were in a wheelchair that, that performed the dance, there were young people that were autistic that performed the dance, there were young people that had Down Syndrome that performed the dance. It was, and they, they danced their little hearts out and they were yelling out to their moms too, "Mom, hi," you know? It was just really, it was just really sweet. And then they had cocoa and cookies afterwards and they got to sit with Santa. But I will tell you, I needed to, I needed to ha- see a little joy from some people because the past week was extremely, extremely difficult. And, and it's going to take, for some people, they'll never fully recover, they'll have that trauma for, for a lifetime. And if we can provide resources to those families, I know OVP has counseling services, we need to make sure that we're able to offer that to any and everyone, which is why Care Solus, if you didn't know, Care Solus, that's up on our website as well, that they're twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, they answer like in the first two or three rings you can call and there is somebody there to listen, there is somebody there to encourage, there is somebody there to support, there's somebody there that can help refer, but anybody, anybody in our city can call that number or scan that code and I will make sure everybody gets it, but it is up on our website, it is there and available for everyone. And I, I think that's, that's pretty much it. And so if I skip some, if I miss something, oh well, it'll keep. So at the request, yes, I was also going to say, let's have a moment of silence at the end, but not just one, we have four people, you know, who are, are no longer here with us, with their families. And then we had eleven people, additional people that were struck at some level by gunfire. So we will have a moment of silence now, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Everybody.
I guess we call that a wrap.
Broadcast over. Yo, I got, I got lots, got a lot of opinions on it, what do you, what's yours? I'm sure there's a lot to discuss.
Oh, well, I made some notes.
I came in kind of late, by the way, so I came in like, like when it was an hour and thirty something in, so.
Oh, okay.
Fill me in.
Yeah, well, you missed the public comments and that was actually probably the juiciest part of the meeting. A lot of people, they commented on the shooting, of course, there were family members there that got up to speak and there was also some commentary on the ongoing drama, you know, amongst the council members, you know, and Jason Lee's situation, you know, the investigation and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, and then they got into the, you know, the meeting and, you know, they took care of a lot of business and stuff and then I found interesting, well, I guess they're going to go out there and take a look at the smoke shops, Harding and Wilson there, you know, which is a good thing. And I also got a picture today from Dick Fitzwell, the cops put their spot camera truck over there by the car wash, so, so that got done today. And then, oh yeah, he did mention the state audit, which I believe Jason announced it a few days ago, that his request for the state to come in and audit the city, I guess they're taking him up on, on it. And so state auditors will be arriving here and be interesting to see what they, what they find. And then of course, Jason's comments toward the end, I thought were pretty enlightening on a number of different points. So as I said, I'm going to be clipping some of this shit to put up tomorrow and, yeah, yeah. There was a recess at one point, this one, one woman who got up to speak ran over her time and it took a minute to, I guess, get her out, out of her room and stuff and so again, and that was during the public comment part. And that was probably, you know, the best part of the meeting because, you know, I actually got to hear from the public and, you know, not, not just the same handful of people that are always there at every meeting, we always seem to get up, you know, We always seem to get up, you know, and stuff. But, you know, yeah, there was a good selection of folks. Actually, the public comments went on for quite a while. So, yeah, that was, that was my, my take on things. So there's another meeting next, next week, next Tuesday. And that'll be it for the 2025 year, as far as city council meetings go. So, I know you said you had some feedback. If you can give the, let's say, the condensed version.
Sure, sure, sure.
I want to wrap up the stream. And then, yeah, maybe Thursday, you know, I want to spend a little time elaborating, elaborating on it also. But yeah, anything pop out at you?
I guess what popped out at me is, what was it called? Public comments, because I saw a lot of them. Not all of them, but like most of them. And I got to say, man, it's like, this is pretty much, what would you call it? Like a breaking point, like that one Keanu Reeves movie, Point Break? Or, but you know what I mean? It's like, we're pretty much at the point break for our city. So it's either, hey, you either lock and load and get your shit together, or it just gets worse from here, you know what I mean? Because it's like, I feel like with this one, it's like people are just tired and fed up with it because I guess people are just tired of having to live with fear of how fucked up things are and that their kids can get shot for just randomly anything. And I guess that's the, people don't like thugs. Like the tolerance level is gone. I guess that's my interpretation of it. Because it's like, they're saying, it's right, though, is that you got this music that promotes this shit. And you have to ask yourself, is a why? So I guess that's my short condensed version, is that the feeling is that people are pretty much fed up with the bullshit. So if you look like someone who's a gangbanger, you're not going to get invited to anyone's fucking birthday party. I mean, that's what I, stay away from that type of lifestyle.
Yeah, unless, unless those are the people that are actually involved in throwing the party.
Oh, shit, never mind then. Well, then again, that begs the question, is after throwing the party, and you have your kids and your family over there, and there's a fucking, what's it called, like a shootout and shit, is it, is it wrong to say that sometimes the parent or family can be partially blamed because you put your kid, your family, in this environment to begin with, right? So it's like, you had a choice between Chuck E. Cheese and this shit. And, well, you know what I mean? But would it have changed, though? Would it have changed, even if it was Chuck E. Cheese or Ramal? Would the change its location, would that have stopped the attack, though? Would they really?
I would say probably not. I mean, if, if these people are that hell-bent on killing each other, you know.
I call that homegrown synthetic terror, Jack. Homegrown synthetic terror, because it was born here. It was molded, molded, and it was pretty much unleashed here. And that's why we have a culture of never-ending violence. Like, it's all like Dante's Inferno when you think about it because we're in a circle of hell. And I think we're pretty much in limbo. I call it a limbo because it's, you're doomed to, you can see paradise, but you're never going to reach it. And that's why it's limbo, because you're just going to repeat the same shit over and over. And Stockton's been violent since the 60s, the 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000s, 2010s, the 2020s. And it's going to be the 2030s soon enough. And the question that anyone should be giving a shit about is, are we still going to be dealing with this gang shit? Like, do you really want to be scared of when you're getting groceries?
Well, yeah, I get your point. And again, this exact same scenario is being played out in cities all across the map. Okay? And this time, Thanksgiving weekend, it came to Stockton. And so, yo, one of the things I took away from the meeting tonight is that the, and the mayor at the end went over some facts and figures. And I'd actually like to get a copy of some of that information on like, you know, Officer Violence Prevention, some stats on, you know. Apparently, they are reaching some of these at-risk kids. And, you know, there is some good being done in that direction, you know. But at the end of the day, you still have to live with the fact that with all of that, and all this money that goes into all these programs, and all this outreach, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you've still got X number of killings. You still got kids getting shot, kids shooting kids. And so, and so on, and so forth.
Kids killing each other, pretty much. That's what your city's only known for, that. Hey, what if a guy's say, Stockton, you drive over it. You fly over it, but you don't stop here. Or whatever the fuck she was saying in one of the meetings. I'm like, when the own mayor is self-aware enough that she knows that people who have heard of her city are told to pretty much avoid it at all costs. I think that pretty much tells you the state of the city.
Well, okay, yeah, and like.
There's a reason for that, right?
Yeah, but see, here's the thing. And you know, like, okay, they, you know, they have to put a positive spin on it. And, you know, we want, you know, better image, and, you know.
How's it going?
What defines, okay. And so like, you know, they'll talk about, oh, well, we got the good working people here. We got the people that go to church. We got the people that are involved with the community, and they're doing this and that, and the other thing. That's great. I don't, I don't care if you have a crowd of people the size of Woodstock doing all that good shit.
Yeah, who does?
Okay, I, okay. It just takes one guy. Understand this.
With a gun?
One guy who maybe had a little bit too much drugs or alcohol in his life, is a little bit mental, whatever. One guy with a gun can do enough damage and wreak enough havoc that all the eyes are on that. Why? The same reason why people want to know why traffic slows down when there's a wreck? Because all the looky-loos got to go and look, right? It's called human nature, okay? There's a reason, and again, I brought this up on the show last week. There's a reason why, a news source in India and places all over the map are talking about Stockton now because of the mass shooting, okay?
Again, publicity.
That's, that's what the eyes will be on. All right, I'm sorry, you know, I didn't make things that way. That's just the way it happens. It's called human nature, folks, okay? This is the way people, your neighbors, your family members, and everybody else you know, and everybody in this fucking town, that's the way 99% of people respond to certain stimuli. All right? People are looking, you know.
The future.
They're looking at the car wreck. They want to know all about the homicide scene, all right? They're waiting to see the next chair fly across the room, you know, at the council meeting. You know, this is what people gravitate to. And again, I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. That's the way your fellow man, I'm talking to everybody out there, your fellow man, your neighbors, and probably you yourself behave in those kind of situations, you know? So paint the rosy picture all you want. And I know there's good people here. I know, I know because, because I know a lot of them myself, all right? But again, one guy with a gun can do unimaginable shit that you'll be talking about for weeks on end, all right? And, 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 you know, we know there's more than one when the mayor herself says, we got 5,000 known gang members here. All right? Well, it goes back to what I've been saying. You know, you've got three buildings here that are always full, always Grand Central Station-level busy whenever they're open. The courthouse, the Human Services Welfare Office, and mental health. All right? That's a huge chunk of your population that have their lives married to the criminal justice system, mental health, or the welfare state. All right? I'm sorry, that's the raw material.
The most stockinged residents.
Every day. So, so understanding that, you know, to think, oh, yeah, every day will be fine, nobody's going to slip on a ban appeal today, and a gun's not going to go off. That's not a good bet to take. That's not a good bet to take. And again, like we were discussing, you want to bring jobs here? You want companies to come here and stuff? Well, you know, when, you know, again, what defines you? What's your reputation? You could have, you could have a population the size of the Woodstock Concert, you know, all great people, all right? Just takes one. It just takes one. And I guess you got about 5,000 here on the streets that could be the next one at any moment. Add to that a understaffed police department that still don't have a contract. I didn't, I didn't hear a word about that tonight, did you?
No, I just heard a bunch of bullshit, to be honest. I didn't hear any solutions.
Well, yeah, that's something else that's on the table. And it is, it's literally like the elephant in the room, okay? You got a violent city, you got, you got public safety issues. The cops don't have a contract, you know?
By police force.
That's like.
Are you going to call, Jack? When you get, there's no, there's no cops in Stockton?
Call my Uncle Sal.
I call, I call Mike.
You know, well, look, one thing I try and teach everybody is, you know, it's your ass, what are you going to do? You know? How about, how about treating the world with a little sense of reality? And prepare yourself, be a little self-aware. When you're out walking about, you know, your phone belongs in your pocket, you know?
Headphones off.
Looking down on it, okay? Because the bad guys out there are always, always, always looking for targets of opportunity, and they know how to spot them, all right? So keep the phone in your pocket, keep your head on a swivel. And, you know, maybe learn, learn a few things. You know, learn how the human body works so that if you are around somebody that just got shot, you can, you know, apply some first aid properly, you know? Literally, we're on that kind of level of survival mode. And.
Always.
And again, it's not peculiar to Stockton, all right? It doesn't, you know, it doesn't make us unique. It's going on in LA, in Oakland, in Detroit, in Memphis, New Orleans, anywhere where you got an urban, you know, civilization. And so, and you brought, you brought up the point of, you know, well, why did, why did they do it and stuff? And, you know, and the rap music, and the lyrics, and, you know, driving, you know, people into that. Funny because, and people are actually starting to talk about it now. But we go back to the late 80s, early 90s, and the collusion between certain people in the record industry and certain other people in the private prison system, all right? A prison system that always is going to need a clientele. So if you have a media method to essentially brainwash people, direct people into a life of crime, you know, via, you know, lyrics, culture, whatever, well, it seems like that's a pretty good partnership, all right? And if you think people can't be influenced by, you know, song lyrics, or advertisements, or any of those other stuff, and say, oh, no, not me. Guess again, guess again. Because you'll be hard-pressed to find any psychologist, psychiatrist, psyops specialist in the military, or an ad man on Madison Avenue that will disagree with me. And that's just a fact, Jack. So on that note, Scotty, I'm going to sign off and get the fuck out of here. And we'll see you Thursday, 8 o'clock, Port City Uncensored. And also, next Tuesday, we'll be stream sniping the next meeting.
See you then.
All right, Scotty, thanks for jumping on. And let me see this, oh, yeah, brand-new intro I made, just for 24/7.
Now go home and get your fucking shine box.